2025.
Call a special finance committee town hall meeting to order at 6:00 PM. The members present are James May, Christopher Murray, it's Vicky DeShawn and myself, Chair. And we're going to start with the administration has a presentation that'll go through some different topics and points of interest and things like that. And then after that, then we'll go on to the public comment section. So I'm going to turn it over to Auditor Kaylee Lewis.
Hi, thank you all for coming. Like Kevin said, this is our town hall meeting for Bucyrus City Council Finance Committee. The purpose of this meeting is to provide information from the administration to the public and to allow the public input for possible solutions to budget shortfalls. To generally go over some budgetary terms, we have estimated revenues, which is the amount of revenue expected to be received in total by fund or by source during the year. Estimated resources are current year revenues plus the carryover balance. And appropriations are the amounts approved for expenditure by council in accordance with fund program object restrictions. So if you ever look, or so when we're doing budgeting, right? What happens is we look at the estimated revenues for the year. So what we typically bring in into the water fund, into the sewer fund, into the general fund, into the safety forces fund. And I look and I say, okay, this is how much money I think we're bringing in, and that allows for so much expenses. And we can also go into, like when we say we have a $300,000 shortfall, so that's the carryover. So the estimated revenues are what's coming in just for 2025. The estimated resources for 2025 are the revenues plus that carryover. And then the appropriations are the budget and any appropriations we do throughout the year where we're adding to the budget or deducting from that. Revenues, where do they come from? So they come from different places. So your city income taxes, that money all goes to the general fund, the safety forces fund, and the street fund. So the general fund gets 1% of your tax money to the city. The safety forces fund gets 0.75%, and then the street fund gets 0.5%. The enterprise funds, that is the waterworks fund, the sewer fund, the solid waste fund, and the stormwater. Did I say stormwater first? That is paid from your utility bills and other utility charges. For example, bulk water, any kind of fees that maybe we charge another company to use. So we are required as a statutory city by the ORC to have certain fund types. There are multiple fund types in governmental accounting. General fund, which is 100, special revenue funds, like 200, debt service, which are 300, capital projects are 400, proprietary or enterprise funds are 700. There are rules listed in the Ohio Revise Code that stipulate what can and cannot occur in those funds. So the city of Bucyrus has our 101, that's the general fund. Under special revenue funds, we have, these are not all of our funds, by the way. We have the safety forces, which is 202, and street, which is 210. Debt service being 300, we currently don't have any active debt service funds. Capital projects, so you know, we're talking about this wastewater plant we're going to be building, so we have our own fund for that, and council passed that as an ordinance. We could create this capital project fund for the wastewater plant construction for 417. And then proprietary enterprise funds, 700, so that's once again where your utility bill goes. So waterworks, 701, sewage, 720, solid waste slash trash, 750, and stormwater, 760. And this is my nice little analogy for how the money works. So if you think of the general fund as oh, negative blood. We can send money to other funds to help. We can front money to certain funds or advance it and then send it back. General fund money can go anywhere. But you cannot send money from like the swimming pool fund to the water fund, or the sewer fund to the safety forces fund. So if you're ever out there and you see someone, you know, and we're complaining, saying, you know, we can't, I think I have this later in the slide, but if we're saying, okay, we are struggling to put a roof on city hall, it's going to cost us $400,000. We can't, but you see, we spent $800,000 repairing streets. Well, that's because that money goes in separate funds, and we are legally not allowed to take street money and put it toward fixing the roof, because that would be general fund money. And what would happen if you were to mix blood, you know, A and B, or, you know, it wouldn't go well. You would die. So we're not allowed to do that. We will never do that, because I'm not willing to go to jail for that. Sorry, I lost my mouse. Okay, so here's the utility bill breakdown. When you look at your bill, you will see that all utilities are broken down into the different sections. What most people might consider just their water bill pays for multiple utilities. So when comparing a customer outside of the city limits who pays Rumpke for trash, their quarterly bill, this was from someone who uses it, was $70.84, or $23.61 a month. In comparison with the city, the users pay $18 a month. So there's a 31, they pay 31% more through Rumpke than the city charges, because if you remember, the city is not allowed to make money off of you guys. So we're never trying to have money to spend or save up and hoard. If we do something like that, it's because we're looking to do a big project. It's never, we're never trying to, we don't have any investors we're trying to get profits for, right? So, and if you look at your bill, you can see that it's broken down to water. So that $66 in this bill goes to fund 701 only. And the sewer, 4740, goes to 720, which is the sewer fund. Trash, solid waste, that $18 goes into fund 750. Stormwater goes into 760, and then we have another stormwater separation, which is a set amount for 760. And leak protection goes into 701. So if something's wrong with, if we have a huge water line break, we can only use this $66 from your bill to pay for it. We're not going to go into money from your trash to pay for a water line break. And I do want to just do a reminder, because this is a personal thing. My brother, up last year, had an issue with the water line in his house, and he didn't tell me until months later. But you pay, if you didn't opt out of it, you pay this $1.10 here. So if you have a water line break, call the utility office downstairs. We may be able to help you out with that, because you pay for leak insurance. Okay? And then here's a little bill from trash outside of the city. All right, and now I'm going to be turning it over to the mayor.
So you guys understand when Kaylee had said about the water line leakage, you're allowed to have a one-time occurrence per year. So there's been occasions when someone will have a water line break inside your house, and that insurance actually pays for up to $1,000. So I mean, it's very beneficial for you to not opt out of that dollar a month insurance. Five-year county, what were, the importance of what I want to do with this slide is, is the first four lines where it says, and we started getting into the water expansion business outside the city of Bucyrus. In 2021, State Route 98, we went ahead and run a water line from Beech Grove Road out there at the water filtration plant, and we run it back towards Bucyrus on Route 98. And at that point in time, the city of Bucyrus decided that they would fund that project themselves without any help from the county commissioners. The city spent $251,681.15 of their own money, but then they also applied for a grant, which is from the Ohio Public Works grant, and they were able to also get help from them for a tune of $134,980. But there again, the city was starting to try to do water line expansion without help. And so that was starting to eat into the fund, the water department fund in 2021, with anticipation that when you're running that water line, those water lines should really actually pay for themselves, and that's what you've got to be real careful with when you start running water lines without actually having anybody help you. The next water line in 2022, we actually went ahead and did a major water line replacement on Woodlawn Avenue, and that was $220,000. I'll just keep it to the thousands. And then we also had a $105,000 Ohio Public Works Commission grant, and that helped us to the tune of 105,000. And then in 21, 2021, 2022, the Stetser Road Phase One, and the Phase One project was, we started running, we started right there at, like we'll say, the Pines Reservoir, and we started running Phase One. We actually run a water line out as far as Stephanie Drive. And that was a major leap forward for the city, and they spent their own money again, and spent $538,000 with no help at all. So I mean, that was starting to eat, there again, eat into the water fund. And then the next project, Bucyrus, they went ahead, is they went ahead and did Partridge Road Water Line Expansion. And that was the tune again of $408,000, coming out of the water fund with no help. So that's, so all in all, the city spent $1,289,000 of their own money trying to expand water out into the county. The next part of it was, is now we're starting to, the county commissioners, they were starting to help us at that point in time. I take it back, wait a minute. Yeah, okay. The next project was in 2023, and that's what we called the Phase Two Project. That was Stetser Road Phase Two, and that's where we went ahead, and we started, we picked up where we left off at Stephanie Drive, and we went ahead and provided water to Stephanie Drive residents, and we continued all the way out to State Route 602. We run the water line all the way out to 602 with the intentions at that point in time is we've already had a water line running out to North Robinson at that point in time. We had a water line already, a water line that went to 602, and then it turned south and picked up North Robinson. And water lines always work best when there's a loop system. That way, if there's ever a leak, or as well as water quality, you would like to have a loop system. So at that present time, they went ahead and run that Phase Two water line down 602 to the south and hooked it into Route 330. And that also helped with, there's an existing water tower, and there again, it helps with water pressure, helps with water quality. And so that's what their decision was at that point in time. But they actually did help, they did have help then from the county commissioners at that time, and the county commissioners stepped up and they put in $596,000 at that present time. So then you can see where the county commissioners, what the county commissioners are doing at that present time is that the federal government went ahead and made the COVID money available. So the county said, well, let's help. We would like to see the water line expansion continue, and so that's where the county commissioners were actually using that COVID money from the federal government. The next one was that Nevada, Winford Road, that's the line that was going out to Nevada. That was an H2O grant. That was $800,000 that come through to help water line expansion to Nevada. Then there was a loan for $294,000, and then there was a grant of $154,000 to go ahead and run a water line to Nevada at that present time. Nevada is our largest water customer. We went ahead and put in a, what do I want to say? We put a master meter in just outside of Nevada, and so we go ahead and we send water there, it's mastered metered, and then from that point on, after that master meter, then Nevada turns around and takes, and they do all their own billing to their customers. Any water leaks after that, that's up to Nevada to take care of that. The next one was Lincoln Highway East. We're going to jump all the way back out to Route 330 at 602. That was a project in 2024. We went ahead, and that was, that engineering was already done. So we went ahead and decided that we would go ahead with the help of the county commissioners, or the, at that present time, I guess there was no help at that point in time. But the decision was made that we would go ahead and pick up those customers east of State Route 602. That was a tune of 100,000. Locust Grove Road, from Stetser, from Stetser Road to Sulfur, there was a project that, that engineering, I guess, was already done at that present time, too. It was a way to get water to Sulfur Springs. And the important part about going, staying, taking water on 600, down Stetser, we don't have to pump the water. It's, that's the good part about going down Stetser and then going down Locust Grove Road to Sulfur Springs, where there's no pumping involved, it's downhill. Spent $198,000 with the intention that we were picking up Sulfur Springs as part of the project. And then we got one ahead and applied for a tap fund grant. It says here, tap fund grant, it was $69,000. The idea of the tap fund grant is that our taps cost $2,500 apiece to hook up to our water lines. We were awarded, we were awarded a tap fund grant for the tune of $1,200,000 as reimbursement. So anybody that was along that water line, what we went ahead and done is we went ahead and applied that grant to the tune of $2,500. So anybody that's all along those water lines that we've installed thus far, they all have a free tap. So it's beneficial to tap in. I mean, it doesn't cost the resident any money, because we're using that grant funding. Only thing that's, the homeowner is responsible is, is from the edge of that right away to their house, that's up to them to run the water line, have a contractor run the water line, and actually install it into their house. And then what we request as part of the agreement is, is we have to have a backflow device on there, as well as we have a radio read meter that's installed in their house. So that's where we're at there. And then we went ahead, and then we knew that there was money. We knew that there was money set aside at that present time. The previous administration wanted, their next major project was, is they wanted to run a water line from Beech Grove Road up to Sulfur Springs, and that was going to be a costly option, because more or less, is there wasn't that many customers going up Stetser, up Route 98 to Sulfur. That was one of the problems. The payback, I didn't believe was there. You know, I'm following with what John Ernstberger's got for me to, he's the expert, along with Dylan Wyatt, he's our engineering company, and they're recommending to myself to go ahead and take that money that was set aside for that project. Along with that project, when you have to have a forever pump, you have to pay to actually have the pump installed, and then you pay electricity eternally to pump the water back to Sulfur. But we already have a water line in Sulfur. The idea was, is to pick up, the previous administration said, well, we would like to pick up those customers between Beech Grove Road and Sulfur, and create a water line loop there as well. But the payback just wasn't there. I mean, it will be forever paying it back. So in the meantime, John was telling us that, you know, really, it's really important that we have a, we have a project that really needs to be done, that has been put off many, many years, and that's a water line on South Walnut Street and Kilborn Drive. The EPA, one of the biggest pushes is, is we want to stay ahead of the EPA when it comes to lead lines. And that, well, that area was one of the major concerns. So we went ahead and decided that we would do a water line on Walnut Street, South Walnut and Kilborn Drive. And so that's where we, that's where we took that money from that project on Stetser, and we spent the money. We spent the money on Bland Avenue of 100, well, we'll say 144,000, 145,000. We spent the water line there because of, there again, of aging water line, worried about lead, and so we did that project, and we also did Kilborn and Walnut Street water line. Let's see, what else? County Line Road, Osceola. Let's see, you've got to help me out. Okay, right now, County Line Road, that's the next project for 2025. We went ahead and we, right now, we're going ahead and putting, we're laying the pipes down, we're having the pipes delivered to Osceola. What we're doing is we're going to run a county line, we're running a water line up County Line Road. We're going to go into Foxfire Campground. Foxfire Campground had a stop order, they couldn't expand anymore into their campground. And so we went ahead and we're running a water line with the help of the county commissioners. They're the ones that are funding that entire project. We're using McKeever and Associates for all the engineering, and we are actually, we are implementing it. We're the implementers of the installation. All the bids went through the city of Bucyrus through the, and, but the county is actually paying for it. And we're running, that water line is there, like I said, is going up County Line Road. It's coming in from the west side of Osceola. It's going to pick up Foxfire Campground, then we're turning, turning east, we're coming down into Osceola, going to pick up all the houses in Osceola, and as well as we're initially, Sunset Springs didn't sign on, but now they've signed on, and they're going to be a part of the project as well. So we're picking up all of Sunset Springs. And then we found that, that through our bid process, we've had some good returns on our bids, they came in lower than what we originally thought, and we're going to bore under the Sandusky River. The biggest thing is, is once you get down in there, underneath the Sandusky River, you have to realize that there's an old limestone quarry right next to it. So there was some concern about boring through the limestone, but they reassured us that they think that they can do it at a reasonable cost, and there again, it's being paid for by the county. They're all excited, the county's excited, the county commissioners are excited about expanding water lines into that area, because of, there's a lot of septic systems that aren't in the best of shape in Osceola, and so by getting good drinking water out in that area. So then we're going to run, we're going to bore under the Sandusky River as this part of this project that we're just getting started with right now, and we're going to go under the river, and we're going to go up to, what's the name of that road? Not Sin Road, but Noss Road. We're going to go as far as Noss Road. That's as far as the money will take us is to Noss Road. I know that there's been some suggestions, some people out on Noss Road, that they would like to have water as well, except the money only goes so far. I know there's been some people that said that they, maybe they would be willing to run and see about running their own one-inch water line off down Noss Road. But that'll be up to the individual, but it'll be coordinated through us. The next, the next one was, is that when we got in here, State Route 4 South, that was the other big, the big one. There's houses along there that have cisterns, and the water is bad, they've had trouble drilling wells out in that area on State Route 4 South. And there was also a family out there that have kids that are in need, and they get like 1,000 gallons of water delivered to their cistern every week. And so we went ahead, we thought that that would be a viable project for us to do, is we went ahead, the city of Bucyrus, being that we've saved money, these bids keep coming in lower than whatever we have ever expected. And so then we went out, knocked on doors out in the south end, out on State Route 4 South, and said, hey, we're going to be doing the engineering for this project. Would you guys be interested? So they're interested, there was a welcome by all the people out there on Route 4 South. We're going to run a water line out Route 4 South to Mount Zion Road. We're going to turn east, go all the way through railroad tracks to the east, and then we're also going to run the water line the opposite direction, across Route 4, and we'll go a couple houses the opposite direction, as well as there's a couple houses beyond Mount Zion Road to the south that also expressed water. And they're going to be a part of helping run the water line to their houses. So that's a, that's a thing that we're excited about, we're helping all those people. And then when we told the county commissioners, hey, we paid for the engineering, they said, that's wonderful, they want to be a part of it, so they're paying for the water line installations. So they're paying for the water line installations. The county, the county commissioners that they were the ones that are the driving force. They wanted to provide as much water line expansion as they could see fit. It wasn't coming out of the county budget. That money was coming from all the COVID money that they had to spend or lose it. And so all the federal COVID money is paying for all these major water water line expansions inside the inside the county. And so we as a city is actually able to provide that to them. Bussiris Waterline Expansion, like I had touched on before, Stetser Road was considered a Phase One project. R A Boars is the one that actually installed that water line. Initially, when we went out Stetser Road, those people out there, there was thirty-five of them that signed up for water. They were excited about having water out there. And that was from the edge of Bussiris out as far as Stephanie Drive. That was what we considered Phase One. They went ahead, those people, they went ahead and paid. They were willing to pay to have their water. They paid a $2,500 tap fee. And so that was before we applied for the grant. So thirty-five people went ahead and paid 2,500 bucks of their own money. So at a later date, we went ahead and we were awarded that grant. And so we went back, we went to the grant and actually investigated the grant. And no, we weren't allowed to provide grant money to those originally thirty-five. But then there was there was fifty-one more people that would possibly be able to to be a part of that. So we went ahead and applied the $2,500 tap grant to those additional fifty-one, which brought brought there's actually eighty-six taps total on State on Stetser Road considered Phase One. At this present time, even though there's eighty-six taps, some people, I don't know why, but I've instructed John and his department to go ahead and start knocking on doors and reminding. I don't know, some people might not even realize it, but fifty-one of those people actually have been made available. They actually have a free tap. The tap is is already there. All they have to do is run a water line from that tap, that free tap that was paid for from that grant. All they need to do is is have a contractor install their water line to their house. So it's just the idea that we have to start generating customers. Now, that that infrastructure's there. Let's let's make let's make use of that now. We we just need to either start hanging door hangers, knocking on doors, sending letters, anything to generate. Right now, out of those eighty-six taps, we only have forty-two people that are actually hooked up. The next road was Parcher Road. And that was there again, that was a project, that was Project Two. And that was that was one of those projects that was started as well before the tap grant actually come into play. Eighteen eighteen people signed up on Parcher Road and they paid $2,500 out of their pocket too. But that was that was early on. That was early on before the the grant has actually was awarded to the city of Bussiris. So since then, after the grant was received, we went ahead and went back through there and found out how many people were there. We went ahead and applied that that free $2,500 to twenty additional people. And so that that grant, that grant paid for twenty more customers. So on that road right now, there's thirty-eight total taps that are installed on Parcher Road, but only thirteen people have taken taken advantage of that water that's there. So there again, you know, John, John and his crew will be knocking on doors and trying to say, hey, you know, the water's here. You know, the grant's already paid for your tap. It's there for the for the taking. And then Phase Two, along with Phase Two, is 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 from Stephanie Drive, picked up Stephanie Drive and run run out to run out Stetser Road all the way to 602, turn turn south and run on 602 up to Route 30. And there's there again, there's a hundred and twenty-one taps that have been installed. And of that hundred and twenty-one taps, at that present time, then the the tap, the tap grant is already paid for those hundred and twenty-one people. The taps are there right now. There's only ten people that have taken advantage of that of that water line. The next one is Nevada Winford Road, went ahead. And there again, the tap, the tap grant is paying for the taps to the $2,500. There's forty-nine taps that are on that road. Only three people have taken advantage of that. And so you guys, so you kind of understand, the city isn't really charging. Our tap, we've determined that we we want we went ahead, a part of an ordinance that we just passed here within the last couple of years is the the tap reflects what the current price of the of the labor and the current price up to date, what the current price is, the cost for the the plumbing to have that installed. And that determination is is 2,500. Rule Water, which is a private company, they charge $3,500. They're a they're a for-profit company. And so that's what so you have understanding. Rule Water charges $3,500 for their water taps. So at $2,500, I think that the people here in Crawford County are getting a bargain. And there again, the the tap, the grant actually paid for that. Lincoln Way East, that was that was from 602 eastbound. There was eight taps installed, three are generating. Osceola, let's see, Osceola, that one's currently under construction. Osceola, there's eighty-eight taps that we've determined. And right now, being that the project hasn't really started yet, we haven't installed, started installing yet, there's no generating income coming out of that project. But there again, the water line's not in the ground yet. State Route 4 South going out of Bussiris South, that's the Mount Zion Road. There there's fourteen taps that are going to be installed, but they're not there yet. That project has not started as well, but that project is being fully funded by the county commissioners. Then there's additional taps that are available. We've determined that there's thirty-four taps that are that are available for other water lines. We went ahead and run a water line out on Crestline Road. There was it was initially, there was only a a couple people that wanted water. And so being that the water line exists, we thought, well, we'll go ahead and put it, we will use that tap grant and put a couple taps in on Crestline Road. Crestline Road is is notorious for terrible water. And that and then the other the other thinking is is that here we went ahead. Years ago, we went ahead and run that water line out 330 from Bussiris and bored under Route 30 and took that water line to North Robinson. We thought we could use, there's quite a few homes along there that being that they could take advantage of of that grant and pay for their water taps. So we thought we would use those that $2,500 grant fund. Because once you get out by the landfill there again, I don't know that I would personally want to be drinking that water. I don't know. I mean, that's just so anyway, that's where we thought we would go ahead and use that. There again, the Crestline Road, there's eight customers, six are actually utilizing it. So that's where we thought we'll anyway. And then State Route 4 North, that that project is actually running a water line up to as far as Andrews Road. Because that there's a there's a a wish that has been made to us from the county commissioners that they would like to see us go ahead and run a water line north on Beech Grove Road. And they said that they would, in the future, they would see if they could help us in the future is to run a water line up north, up Beech Grove Road from Stetser, go north, turn, go down Andrews Road, take it down to Route 4 North. And there again, then that would create a water line loop. And there's interest up in that area to actually run water. But at the present time, we do have a water line up Route 4 North. There's there's five taps that are installed. Four of them are actually generating money. Beech Grove Road, when we actually installed the water filtration plant, how that water line actually got from the the filtration plant back to to Bussiris is we run a water line coming out of the water filtration plant. We run south on Beech Grove Road. We crossed Stetser. If you know where Haught or Hoult, Haught Photography, we run we run the water line through that field, took it up to 330, and then we bored under Route 30. And that's how we got the water line from from the water filtration back to the city of Bussiris to feed the water to Bussiris. Presently, so the long story is we actually have 501 taps. And out of that 501 taps, we only got ninety-six that are actually utilized in those taps. So it's there again, that's why we got hurry up and knock on doors and and see if we can't get water customers. We want water. We want as many water customers as we can have. So it's it's nineteen point two percent is is all that's that's all the return on that money is nineteen point two percent. So let's see, where am I going next? Next one is is I was asked to where we could, am I asking you to flip the? Where how we could increase revenues? I went ahead and sat down with the various city departments. They know their budgets. And from the department heads, I said, well, you know, parking the parking lot on the north side of Wendy's and which is the parking lot, which is is actually a parking lot, which a lot of people always thought was an alley between Wendy's and Clady's is actually a lot. And the city has always used it as a a cut through to the alley that runs north and south behind there. So council went along with the idea of generating money and putting that up for bid. So that that lot is for sale. And then there's four individual parcels on the west side of Wendy's. And so we went ahead and this past week, biggest thing is is trying to get through the corporate world with Wendy's. Wendy's, we've told Wendy's that locally that those lots were going to be up for sale. I don't know if you ever went through Wendy's. I don't know whoever designed that, that getting into the Wendy's thing, I don't know. They they didn't think too far ahead compared to what they used to have years ago. Years ago, when Wendy's used to be right up by the Sandusky Street, you could get into the place without getting a fender bender out of getting into Wendy's. So we went ahead and I went ahead and Mike Keef was able to get a hold of Wendy's Corporate down in Florida. And Wendy's Corporate was thankful that we were actually able to talk to somebody at the corporate level. And so now they're made available. They they know that that lot to the west of Wendy's is for sale. And we're presently taking bids on that property. And then the North End Fire Station, that's up for for bids. And then also the old water tower on East Warren Street. There is water line infrastructure that comes east of Southeast Street that John will have to put a valve in there and then actually remove remove that water line. It presently exists, it used to feed into the water tower. So that's that. The next the next thing was is fee increases. We've the city of Bussiris for you to be a practicing contractor inside the city. A number of years ago, the city went ahead and thought it was in their best interest to know who's who's coming to the city of Bussiris to do business. So the city went ahead and come up with a contractor registration and renewal fees. I don't know, maybe Landon can help me with the the fee structure. But we would go ahead. I think the initial is a hundred dollar registration for the contractor. And then there's a renewal fee after he's renewed. And I think the renewal fee is like twenty-five bucks a year for them to re make a renewal for each year. There's engineering when people bring in plans, whether whether it for B business. Basically, it's a commercial type of thing. We 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 do have engineering tech, which is Landon, as well as a zoning administrator. And so there again, we don't charge a whole lot. But that was one of the things that that they were suggesting that maybe we review the the engineering fees. Bed tax, that's been a hot topic here recently. Fifty percent of that bed tax goes to the general fund. It's paid for by the traveler that that comes through Bussiris. And that bed tax and then the fifty, the other fifth part of the programming is is the other half of it goes to support the tourism bureau. And then we we know that there are, I think, four or six local Airbnb that are practicing inside city limits. They pay nothing at this present time. They they don't contribute to the city. They, they don't contribute to the city's general fund at all. That suggestion was to have us look into it, see if there's anything that could be on the same order as, as the motels. You know, the motels are paying, they're collecting that tax. Maybe the Airbnb's ought to be a part of this, you know, so. And then pawn brokers, there, there was something, well, I seen on the books, but there was nothing that was ever, ever collected. For some reason, we never collected pawn bo, pawn broker fees. And so maybe that would be something that we could look into, seeing if, you know, that might be an option. Park rental fees and pool admission and season passes and pool rentals. I know that Bonnie Welsh, she's the one that's been very instrumental on helping us do that. And she was saying that, you know, that we don't, we don't charge an exorbitant amount of money. She says, matter of fact, she says that there's lots of people that come from other towns and that say, my goodness, you know, wow, okay, we're getting a, quite a bargain here. And so she's suggesting that maybe as a committee or council or whoever, look at, look at some of these fees. And maybe that would be, that would be something to look at. Yard Park is one, is a hundred dollars. There again, so you all understand that, that the churches here locally and the nonprofits, they, they don't pay anything. So just so you know that, that's loud and clear. Pool fees, pretty cheap day, pretty cheap day of, of fun at the pool, three bucks. That's something maybe that, you know, we look at. I, I know that, you know, the pool is not to make money of any kind, but, you know, the biggest thing is, is what, it costs about $120,000 to operate that pool. It's a money, money loser between having to put water in that pool because the pool leaks. Years ago, they went ahead and had pool reconstruction done on it, but we didn't have a bond on it when they did it years ago. And so then there was no bond, no bonding done on the pool. The contractor come in, poured the concrete, probably on the, on the hottest days of the summer. The concrete got ahead of the contractor. And so then they turn around and, and out of the settlement, they had to come back in, break the block, break the concrete back up. And it's leaked ever since. That pool's been reconstructed, but still leaks like a sieve. So we got to add water to it a couple, three times a week. Even as you, as we speak, we got water running in that thing now. Trying to keep the water, we have to keep water in it year round. Otherwise that, that, that pool cracked worse. Plus, you know, it suggested that, you know, to keep the, the pool in the ground, that we need water in there to offset the, the freezing and thawing of that pool. The next thing is, is, now, I kind of got ahead, well, wait a minute, I hadn't done that one. The next one is engineering and zoning fees. Just want someone to be able to look at it. Right now, what, what was part of our, part of the administration's, that was tasked to us by the city council, the service committee and plating, and, and they all wanted us to sit down. So we've been, for like the last six months, we've been going through all the city ordinances, sitting down with all the department heads. We got our engineering company, McKeever and Associates in here. And so we've been trying to reassess all the fees. And then it's, then it goes back to, to the council committees for them to review. And then if they see fit, then it goes to Brandon. And so Brandon, he is, he's been busy from day one. I mean, he had so much that wasn't done when he got here. And so it's an uphill battle for him right now, trying to get caught up. So just so you know, these are the fees, something that maybe they need to be looked at. And so the next one is enterprise funds. And, and you have the understanding, Kaylee explained that to you quite well. Enterprise funds are actually not, not general fund. General fund actually can help, but enterprise funds, they're, they're a business in themselves. They, 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 they provide a service to the citizens of Bucyrus. Enterprise funds do that. They provide a service, but then they also have to be able to pay the employee. And we're not in the business to making money, but we got to have enough money to actually operate the enterprise fund. And so right now, when we go ahead and install a water line, say outside the city of Bucyrus, and we're running into someone that had a well out in the country, we are not saying that they're not allowed to use their well. We're just saying that we want a backflow device put into their home, assuring that we don't have any water line contamination. We were providing city water to them. We want a backflow device installed in their house so their, their water doesn't mix with the city water. And so that currently, you can go ahead for additional $10 a month of part of your water line, your water bill. For $10 a month, we will go ahead and do it through the water department. They will actually go, once a year, and they will check your backflow device for the tune of $120. We're not, we're not charging anything more than what a private contractor does. Ken Brothers, they are on the same, same page as we are. They charge $120 a year to do it. We go ahead and, and allow you that option of just paying $10 a month. And that way, it's not $120 coming out of your pocket all at one time. Leachate, that's the county landfill. They, the leachate is, is the bad stuff that, that they collect into, into their own well system that collects the bad chemicals. They go on a periodically, periodic basis. They pump and put it in a big tanker truck. And they, years ago, the, the idea was, I've been around as long as anybody, if not longer than anybody. Years ago, what they used to do is bring the leachate to the fairgrounds. And there's a sewer system right there at the very south end of the fairgrounds. And they used to dump that, they're thinking that, years ago, they used to, to dump that leachate into the sewer system. And they thought by doing it that way, it would, would be less, it would be easier for them. Once the leachate went all the way through our sewer system and got out to the sewer plant, it would be easier to treat. It would be more diluted at that present time. But that, that thinking has changed now. But it is actually a money-making project for the city. The Rumpke has to get that treated. They have to have a disposal place to take it. And so that's a money-making project for us, is that we accept the leachate at our sewer treatment plant. And so, you know, maybe that's something that needs to be reviewed and looked at. Dumpster fees, we as the city of Bucyrus, Kaylee has already talked about that, dumpster fees right along with garbage rates. You know, the garbage, garbage is only one part of the utility bill. I mean, there again, garbage is a self-supporting enterprise fund. They're their own business. We actually, we actually collect money. We, we utilize that money as best as possible. We charge, there's an extra dollar on that fund. And we collect it. It takes us a number of years to be able to, to have money set aside for us to buy a new packer and a new chassis to put the packer on. Jeff Dunn has been very instrumental on saving us money and his thinking. And so when we turn around and buy a new garbage truck, chassis and packer, we turn around and take that packer off, take that garbage truck and take it to Galleon, Ohio, and utilize the, the company over there that's, makes the dumps. And we turn around and utilize that, that garbage truck as a, a new dump truck. And it, it actually works out great for us. Go ahead.
Can I use the microphone? I just wanted to add, since we're talking about solid waste and trash, something that I didn't know until I took this job, but something that could possibly affect the rates is putting the lid on your trash cans. So we get charged every time we take trash and dump it at the waste site. And if you don't put your lid on your trash can and that rainwater gets in, it makes everybody's trash heavier. So that can affect the rates that we would have to charge in the future. And it's just a small thing that could help reduce costs down the line for everyone.
And to go along with that, is this past January, February, we did notice, we, we do look at the rates, we do look at what the Rumpke is charging us. We did notice, being that we just recently had a lot of rain, we had a lot of snow, we noticed that our, our fees went up at the county landfill. We as a city had to pay more to dump our trash. And we attribute it to, you know, garbage cans with no lids. Water fills the garbage can, snow fills it, and then we throw it into the back of the garbage truck. So we did, we actually did see an increase in, in our costs to Rumpke just here in January and February. And so along with it is, is that I know we have one individual that, one employee here at the city that, that her water is like, no, her, I mean, water, oh boy. Garbage is like 42 bucks through, through a, a private enterprise that charges for garbage. And then, then we had another employee that we used, that we used their, their utility bill. And, and Kaylee had it up on the screen. That was $23 and some cents. And that's a private, that's a private Rumpke. We as a city of Bucyrus, I mean, where else can you dump, have your garbage? You've got six bags, six bags and you, and you pay only $18. I mean, that's pretty much a bargain right now. One of the problems is though, our fund is, it's just skating by. And then when, when it skates by on slim margins, and we notice that we're getting charged more at the landfill because of possibly the snow and the rain and all that, it makes a big difference. I mean, it, it only makes those, those lines get thinner and thinner. So I know since I got in here in this job, there, there are so many things that have been kicked down the road. You know, we haven't had any, any rate increases since 2019. What city council needs to do is they need to take the politics out of these rate increases. There needs to be a way that, that the rate increases would happen like two or three percent going forward, take the politics out of it. You know, right now, what, what is so difficult for myself is, is that people have said that, geez, there's no jobs in Bucyrus, there's nothing. Well, we've had, we've had businesses come to town and our sewer plant is inadequate. But the problem is, I mean, the, you know, you don't want to be negative, but it, the facts are the facts. We should, we should have raised rates previously, previous years. We, we should have put money aside for a sewer plant, never happened. We as new people coming in, thank God, we got a new council, the new council said yes. You know, we understand, we understand that we have to work as a, as a collective group. We want to be able to provide jobs, jobs don't, problem is, jobs don't happen overnight. But we collectively went ahead and decided that, you know, that's one of the most important things is jobs. You know, you know, oh, but there's no steak place to eat a steak here in town. Well, that's, that's the nice part about having jobs. Restaurants come as a benefit of having good jobs. And so thank goodness, you know, the, the council and the administration, you know, we're, we're moving forward on building a new sewer plant. Problem is, geez, we're getting beat up by, I mean, we're the bad guys now, collectively as council and as administration. We're the bad guys. You know, Jesus, we had to raise sewer rates. Yikes, you know, 14%, 15%. So we didn't, we didn't actually get a full year of collection in 2024. That, that, that kind of, that kind of beat up, beat us up a little bit, not being able to collect a full year of rate hike increase to help. We want to be able to have money set aside for when that first payment comes in for our sewer plant. That's why we didn't necessarily come up with a rate structure. You know, we left that up to, to the engineering companies that have been hired in the past. They've actually been able to, they have their own financial wing that have advised us to how much to set the rates and increase the rates so that there's money set aside for when the first payment comes due. So that's one part of it. And then on the water, you know, there was, there was water that we thought, that we thought there was funding set aside for that Route 98. Now, the, long story short, there wasn't that much money, but then we turned around and spent money trying to help the citizens of Bucyrus. And, and then you have to think far enough ahead that you got to, geez, there has never been a, a water rate, rate increase since 2019. And so then, then you have to be the bad guy again, you have to raise the rates, you know. So it's a difficult situation is having to face all of you guys and say, hey, got to raise the water rates. Well, if we don't raise the water rates, we don't Well, if we don't raise the water rates, we don't have enough money to operate. But the problem is, would have been nice if there have been incremental water rates being done over the number of years it should have done, but it didn't happen. So you can't cry about what didn't happen, you just got to bite the bullet and then, and raise the rates. So that's where we're at right now when it comes to water rates, sewer rates, we had to do it. The water tap fees, there again, this is, I kind of jumped ahead of myself, but we don't charge exorbitant amount of money for that tap fee, you know. We, we, we do it with what the, the current charges are of what the pipe is and the labor and everything. And we as a, the city, we do that. We, we install that tap. Our, our water department people do that, you know. There again, you know, the, these guys that are in the water department, in the sewer department, geez, they're the guys that are out there at midnight, three o'clock in the morning, you know, they're the ones that are plowing the city streets. You know, John, he can't control one, the water line is going to break. Right now, this is the very first time in years that we've actually had deep penetration of freezing into the ground. We've, we've dug as deep as 18 inches deep now and we've found frozen ground 18 inches deep. And so the people, so you guys know going forward, there's going to be a lot of street problems going forward. The streets, a lot of places, the streets starting to buckle, the streets starting to pull apart because of the, the freezing and thawing. We've had a, a lot of water line breaks here recently, all because of the, the deep penetration of the freezing of the ground. These guys are, you know, they're digging out in the cold. Yeah, there, there has to be boil advisories, yeah. I mean, they try their best to knock on everybody's doors, hang tags. Yeah, you know, we don't want anyone to get sick, so we, we've got to be very diligent about letting everybody know. We get it, we put it on Facebook. Bonnie is very, very good about that, letting the residents know that, that of all the, the boil advisories, we're just doing it because, you know, we don't want anyone sick. Getting back to the, the Rule Water, they're a for-profit company, they're everywhere. I mean, they, right now, Rule Water, I mean, they're running a water line, they run a water line out of Willard, they, they, gee whiz, you know, Attica, they went ahead and built themselves a reservoir a number of years ago, but now they've decided they don't want to be in the water business. So they've given up Rule, Rule Water's running Attica plant. Rule Water is all the way down into the county, they're just outside Bucyrus, they're not, they're, they're knocking on our doors. Thank goodness, there again, though, we had good county commissioners, county commissioners have taken that money, they partnered with us and so they are helping us expand our water. It's, it's so beneficial for us to be able to sell more water. Yeah, the more water we can sell, the better off we are. We got, right now, that, that water filtration plant, so you guys understand, we have to generate money to the tune of $1.6 million a year. We're paying $1.6 million a year to pay that, that water plant off. So that's, that's a lot of money. But there again, hopefully by running these water lines outside the city, we'll hopefully be able to spread the costs of a, of future expansion. Hopefully all this, all these water taps will pay off in the long run. Like I said, Nevada's one of our, the largest water customer that we have. Thank goodness, you know, they, they chose that we were able to provide them with quality water. They were on a well system, John, he probably could speak to that, but we are providing them with water. So any rate, and then the other, the other kicker that has really hurt us income tax-wise is that when COVID happened, a lot of the private companies, we have companies here with inside the city, and they decided at that present time that they could manage to have their employees stay and work from home. And that hurt us really badly. That, that has crippled us on income tax. So, you know, I know the federal government, they're looking at it right now, getting their employees back at the federal level, but you know, that's a different topic. But the biggest thing is, is that it's costly to us as a, as a city to not be able to collect those income taxes. And of course, then when we lost John Electric and VPT and, and you know, there was lots of industry here in town, Baha Bo's and Checkmate and Swan Ho's and all that. I mean, that just has continued, continued to hurt the income tax. But by going ahead and having a, a working relationship with council and getting the sewer plant underway, you know, hopefully there we will see, to be able to reap something in the future. I know there's a lot of pushback when it comes to the partnership. You know, we don't have, we don't have the money as an individual city to be able to, to, to be able to seek out the companies. We're competing, Bucyrus, Galleon, Crestline, all of Ohio, Iowa, they're all, we're all competing for that, for that company. We're trying to be able to stand out and make ourselves attractive to industry. By, by investing in the sewer plant, we're making ourselves attractive. We're, we're actually able to provide not only a sewer system to the existing customers, but we will have extra capacity to provide for future companies. Presently, now I'd, I'd really like to say, oh, you know, this, this company and that company and everybody's, there's a lot of things that goes on behind the scenes that we just can't talk about. You know, I have to sign non-disclosure statements, you know, there's not businesses, they come, they sign an intent to look at properties and then six months to a year, then they sign another intent. The biggest thing is that, that partnership, they really are helping. They, they are actually helping us. They are helping Galleon, they're helping Crestline, they are helping Crawford County as a whole. We as a city of Bucyrus, we contribute to their, to their employee base, they are, we are utilizing them. Now they have a, a new person on, on staff at the partnership and they have applied for grants and they have a person that's working with, with the Attorney General's office. We met with them again this past week and they said that they are very happy with the results from the state level to the county level. And they're happy that they are actually in partnership and trying to work with the partnership. They made it, they made us aware of, of brownfield grants, being that now that the partnership actually has someone at the local level that actually will be able to help us look at brownfield areas as well as now they have, right along with that person on staff, they actually have a person that's actually, is able to help with remediation when it comes to asbestos. So they are again, they are able to seek out grants when it comes to brownfields and asbestos remediation. So we're very thankful that we are able to partnership with the Crawford Partnership. I mean, they're a valuable asset. We, we as a city, I don't see how that we could ever afford to pay someone to just do that. Right along with it, we do have, we do have Jennifer Jeanette, we, she's been a very valuable person that we've utilized this past year. We went ahead and she was able to, I, I was approached, should I go ahead? Previously, there was the other administration decided that, that they would do away with the Pines Reservoir. And so I had to make a decision when I first got in here, should we drain the Neff Reservoir? And that'll be just another big mud hole. And so that was a hard, difficult decision on my half to decide what should I do. So I went ahead and through the help of John Ernstberger, I was able to sit down with Jennifer Jeanette and she, along with Ohio Department of Natural Resources, she was able to find me a grant to help fix the dam on the Neff Reservoir. There's a lot of people that actually do fish there. It's an asset that I look at it as an asset that, you know, the Crawford Park, the Crawford Park, I don't know if you ever realize it or not, but they have a lot of canoeing programming on the Neff Reservoir. And so any rate, Jennifer Jeanette was able to find us a grant to pay for the reconstruction of that dam on the Neff Reservoir. So she's a very, very valuable asset. And so utilizing her, leak detection is the other big part of, of water department. I know that John Ernstberger has been very diligent on trying to detect any type of water lines that are leaking. They do a, on it on a regular basis. Right now, right now presently, we have a major water line leak right now and it's on Southern Avenue and it's right underneath the railroad tracks, right in front of Eagle Crusher. Trying to find out how we're going to repair that. That, that's going to be a, a major project underneath that railroad tracks and trying to find money to do it. That's, that's one of the difficult things that we are faced with right now is that that's a major water line running down Southern Avenue. So I'm telling you upfront right now that, so everybody knows that gonna have to find money somewhere. I don't know, possibly we might have to go out for a loan to pay for that. But we, there again, we're losing money, you know, we're, all this treated water is possibly creating a sinkhole, sinkhole, a future sinkhole. But in the meantime, that's treated water that we could be actually making money from selling it somewhere else instead of running it into the ground. So, but the next order of business was cell, cell towers. We've actually had a company and council's been involved and Brandon's been involved, you know, the cell, the cell tower out here, you know, they wanted us to go ahead and just to make a, a flat rate. They will come in and they want us to, to accept a flat rate for, I don't know, the next 20 years or 30 years without any rate increases, incremental rate increases. So Brandon was negotiating with them and said, you know, hey, we want, we want to be able to actually make money off of that tower. And instead of paying a flat rate for eternity, and so now they've withdrawn, they're, they're wanting to, to negotiate with the city. And so then now here recently, we've just discovered that from, we've discovered that there was a, this, there was another company that approached the city of Bucyrus two years ago and for some crazy reason, it fell through the cracks. And we just discovered it just recently, that they would like to turn around and take the, the old water tower on East Warren Street and they would like to put a cell tower in that, in that residential area. And so having talked to department heads here inside the city, they said, well, you know, gee whiz, we have, we already have area up in, in the state highway garage that the city of Bucyrus already occupies. Maybe that would be something going forward that we could entertain the idea of having a cell tower put in that area of Bucyrus as a money-making operation. It's, it's a fenced in area, it's, it's an industrial that we use as the city of Bucyrus, just food for, for thought. Just, just throwing the idea out that maybe that would be a viable area and continue on with, with the idea of what has been brought up by a council for us to sell that property on East Warren Street and may keep that as a residential area. You know, so, but that's the end of my presentation. That's just what we've come up with and we look forward to working with council. And I think we got a, a good working relationship with all of them. And that's the end of my presentation.
I can say that this department is running our operations as efficiently as we can. I think I've said before that our minimum staff right now is two officers and one dispatcher. We sometimes have.
We sometimes have more than, more than that working, but if somebody takes a, a day off or something, then we don't bring anybody back on overtime until it's a minimum of two on the road and then one, one dispatcher. At times we do have officers sitting dispatched to, again, save overtime on, just in general You know, we have nothing left cut down there except our service and hours of coverage. cut down there except our service and hours of coverage. I will not put out just one officer on the road in this city. We already have the same manpower as places like Crestline and Upper Sandusky that have a far lower population than us. So I think running with two guys is the bare minimum. And with, with that staffing, we back calls up almost every shift to where we have to have people wait. Or it's like when I left today, there was an officer responding to a domestic call by himself because the other guy working with him was already tied up. So we're pretty much constantly, I would say, working short, working from behind. And in spite of that, we've managed to have a pretty good year as far as our crime stats. And I would just, again, reiterate that we're doing our very best to be good stewards of the money that we have budgeted to us. Kaylee has been excellent to work with us, has the administration. You know, we'll continue to work hard to save money and, and come in under our numbers. But I think we're gonna need a little bit of help if we want to have enough staff working to keep the numbers where we want them and make sure everybody's safe.
I just wanted to say specifically in the police department, we've been having issues where they have outside contractors. So we have contracts with different companies or different equipment providers that they require to do their jobs in the most safe and effective manner possible. And we've been really trying to be creative to cut corners, to move money from here to, okay, could we qualify this as a drug expense so we can pay for it with this funds? We really, truly have been trying to be as creative as possible so that they can do the job that they need to do as safely as possible with the contracts that they have to have.
Right. Some of those contracts, we have maintenance every year. We have to pay to make sure our dictaphone is running. That's the device that allows us to record all of our radio and phone calls that come in. I believe we're required by the records retention log right now to maintain those records for two years. So if we let that service slip, we may not have those records. The same with our body cameras and cruiser cameras. The cloud storage system that we have costs about $10,000 a year to store all of our video and audios that we have from our interactions that we go through every, every single day. Was by far the cheapest option to go as opposed to building an actual server to store all that stuff in-house. But we still have to, we still have that expense. And those were two things that we weren't going to be able to fund this year until, like I said, you know, Kaylee and I came up with some ideas of how to, of how to fund it. Our LexiPaul policy system, I think we're gonna pay for out of a different fund this year. So we'll be able to keep that. That policy system comes with built-in training bulletins every month that we can claim through the state as continuing professional training to the tune of $1 or one hour per officer per month on that. So it actually comes out to about 13 hours of continuing professional training each officer gets every year that we can get reimbursed from the state. So I mean, it really, that system really pays for itself. The contracts was a, you know, that we found a way to pay for some of this stuff is actually a huge relief for me. It was very concerning. It's like I said, we'd have to have a records commission meeting and start wiping stuff off the, off the retention here. Otherwise, you know, we'd be in, probably in trouble if we lost all of our, all of our storage of our videos. And as well as the money we spend and how useful those, the body cameras and the cruiser cameras have been for us. Like I said, they dispel an awful lot of citizen complaints and it actually showcases the good work that our officers do. So I'm very glad that we're able to, hopefully able to continue with that. The other thing that we've had slashed is our training budget. I think that if we asked Brandon in law school, what is the first thing that a company looks at is whether to sue you or not? Is your failure to train? Our training budget is down to $7,500 for, I guess it'd be 18 full-time officers right now and five full-time dispatchers that all have, the officers all have 24 hours of minimum training that they need to have this year. And the dispatchers, I think most of them have to recertify on their emergency medical dispatch. So 7,500 bucks isn't gonna go too far when that happens. And if we have any other attrition, that leaves us no money to hire anybody to train. So I truly understand that we're probably running with what we got right now. Just very, very stressful of trying to figure out how you're gonna get from A to B when you don't have any funding to do it. And training isn't very often free.
So, okay. So, and it's one of those, both of us have equipment needs that are coming up that we're currently not away for funding for those. I was gonna go back and, and say that back in, I think, 2006, both of our departments were fully funded out of the general fund. So a lot of that changes, more or less, the, the state took away local government funds and has since then caused the, to us rely on an income tax levy to, to fund both of our departments. Back then, it's one of those, I believe it was $1.236 million came out of the general fund to support the fire department. Currently, that's about what comes out of the general fund when you add in, plus the, the amount of money that we get from billing for EMS calls and our subsidy that we receive from the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District. I'm gonna run through a few things of, you know, we've, we did over 2,700 calls last year, which equates to, I believe, 30, 37, about 3,700 responses. It takes, my staffing level of maintaining six, I have to have it. If we reduce anything of at any time, it increases our response times or more or less meaning waiting on, waiting on that service to get, to get there. The, the number of multiple calls that we have going on at a time is roughly 16% of the time, there's multiple calls. Most of the guys are very fortunate that they're, they work out quite a bit on their own and are pretty buff. But we, we have people in town that weigh upwards of 600 pounds. You don't pick those people up with two people. So the, when we go out into the townships, we rely upon the volunteer firefighters to assist us in, on those calls. And then in town, we rely upon the engine, the secondary, as a secondary crew to, to help with those calls. So, you know, everybody wants to say that we need to cut our staffing at night or, or drop down to four people during the day. You just, if you, if we cut our services, or cut our manning, you're cutting our services. It'll, it just will turn around and create delays and, or, or create the inability to, to handle an incident. 60, 68% of our billing that we receive is from Medicaid and Medicare patients. So there's, just because we bill $750, $800, you're, you're not collecting that, you're not collecting that money. We average, average collection is actually only $380. So there's also been talks of suggesting that we do the quote granny runs or the transports, interhospital transports out of the hospital down to Columbus and stuff like that. We're, we're talking about the same, same amount of people. You might, some people may see a bill that's, you know, several thousand dollars. You're not getting that money from Medicare or Medicaid. And truthfully, that's the whole reason why we're, we got, took over EMS is because the private service was doing everything they could to try to make money. And they were taking the, these other transfers and stuff over providing the emergency medical side of the, of service. So that's kind of it in a nutshell of, of what we're, of what we're doing. We've cut everything, we've cut spending back as much as we've, we can. The same thing as he was saying with training, we're trying to do everything in-house, in-house and online. Is it the best? No. But it's what we can afford. So, you know, with that being said, I just, you know, any cuts will be, would be detrimental to the service that we can provide.
To go right along with that, Chad, who's been very instrumental on, we've had firetruck problems. Chad was actually able to go ahead and study how to fix the truck. We were able to buy the parts and Chad's been working on the, the number of trucks and saving the City of Bucyrus a lot of money as well as, as the police department. They've been very instrumental. And they actually have been receptive to the idea of purchasing good used cruisers. And so then the police department has also helped us save money as a city as well. I just wanted to make sure that the citizens know that both safety forces are doing everything they can do to, to stretch the money as far as it will go.
I get the fun part. Just wanted to go through some history of income tax and the tax rates. Prior to 2014, our tax rate was 1.5%. That was 1% for the general fund and a half a percent for the street levy. In 2012, 2013, city council reduced the out-of-town workers credit by a quarter of a percent. The safety, for the first safety forces levy, the half a percent was passed and for the tax year of 2014. And that was passed 1,595 for the levy and 627 against. So with that passage of the half a percent of the safety forces levy, the credit for out-of-town workers went back to 100%. So also in 2014, fun fact, the City of Bucyrus also passed a levy which took their tax rate from 175 to 2%, which brought them to the same as Bucyrus. So what was previously thought of income that we were going to get from that quarter percent from Mansfield workers was then again reduced to nothing. So when we're counting on money and, and it doesn't happen, then, then our projections, our projections are reduced. In 2014, the City of Willard also passed a tax rate going from 1.25 to 1.375. Bucyrus previously would have received three quarters of a percent of those wages, but that was reduced to 0.625. In 2019, the City of Tiffin passed a levy taking their rate from 175 to 2, which was the same as Bucyrus. So there we were counting on that quarter percent from those working in Tiffin to go toward our, our funds. That was again eliminated. Bucyrus passed an additional safety forces levy of a quarter of a percent in May of 2023. Since that, since that levy was passed mid-year, we had to use a blended rate of 2.125 instead of the full 2.25. So we didn't see the full, the full effect of that tax increase until this tax filing season of 2024. With the passage of the quarter percent safety forces levy, we did cap the credit at 2%. So any worker that is working, say, in the Columbus area with a, with a tax rate of 2.5%, they are, they are paying a reduced credit and their cap debt too. So they then pay Columbus their two and a half and they pay Bucyrus a quarter. In 2023, Mount Gilliard passed a levy going from 1% to 1.25. So Bucyrus would previously have received one and a, and a quarter percent of their wages, but that was reduced to collect 1% instead. This year, Shelby and Willard both passed levies. Shelby went from a rate of 1.5 to 1.75. So our income from Shelby workers went from three quarters of a percent to a half a percent. Willard went from 1375 to 175. Bucyrus previously would have received 0.875 from those wages, but that was reduced to a half a percent. This is just informational really for council. If there was to be a reduction in credit, this would be the percentage, the percentage value of those reductions. And this is just an overview of surrounding cities that we see residents working in. It's in alphabetical order and what their cities then give for their residents as credits. And I have those changes for Shelby and Willard on there too. Okay. This is, for 2023, this is the wages that were earned in each percentage city. So cities that for say, had a 1% tax rate, those wages were $9,379,000. The credit that we gave for those was the $93,792. And it goes all the way up to 2%. Those wages were earned in cities that had a 2% rate or higher. And then the credit for those wages then are beside there. Again, just informational. This is projected additional income for, from a reduced credit. Again, it goes from the percentages giving the 2%, which is our current credit limit. So that's, that's the additional that we would be looking toward getting this year. And it goes all the way down to the elimination of credit. Again, just informational. The next slide is really scary. This is eliminating the credit altogether. I did it by income earned and the yearly amount that you would be subject to and the monthly, what would break down monthly and bi-weekly. Okay. So back in 2019, we stopped using the court system for failing, failure to file and failure to pay. The Attorney General has a collections agency that we then submit those funds to them. They then collect when they're able to. They are able to collect from state and federal refunds and also lottery winnings. So we get those monies when, when they collect those from the, the accounts that we submit to them. So far, we've submitted, since 2019, we've submitted 1,912,965,000, 965, sorry. And the total we've received since then is 554,167.
Okay. So thank you for all the information from the administration. The main purpose of this meeting was to give the public their chance for input. And so that's what we're gonna do at this time. Keep in mind, one of the things that we're really hoping for and looking for is if you have suggestions. That's absolutely what we'd like to hear. So at this time, I'll open to public participation.
Herald, May 9, 34, East Warren Street. I want to start, Mayor, I appreciate your PowerPoint. That was an hour and 15 minutes about the water bill. And I don't think anybody in the room's here about the water bill. The truth is, I mean, the reason people up here The truth is, I mean, the reason people up here, we finally got to it, the water bill, the point about the water going up, I'm okay with that because everybody in the room, if that water bill increases, everybody who lives in Bucyrus has to pay that. Collette, can you bring up that last page, a couple of pages where it was talking about what it's going to cost the people who work outside the city? And a couple of other questions while I was doing this. Is there a limit on this so I don't go too long?
No.
Okay. This, the Bucyrus hourly rate comparison that I, that I just collected from back there, quick question. Is that the current rate or is that what the starting rate is?
Not her answer. I don't know the answer.
Well, this rate chart, is this the current rate that they make or this is what you start off as?
What are you looking at?
Anything. It just says Bucyrus employee rate comparison.
After the raise.
That is the current rate.
That's the current rate, but if you make, but if you've got five years in, then you actually make more than that, right?
No, that's current.
No, that's what top out for.
That's what the current rates is. Okay. So did we get a chance, I also asked, I sent something to you Kevin, I was asking not just what the hourly rates are, but when we talk about like what did, what did the, what did everybody make last year?
I forwarded that onto them and asked them to provide that for you. I don't know if they got a chance.
Does anybody have that?
I did that before.
I'm going to call you guys out here. Chief of Police, what do you, or Chief of Police, what did you make last year? Total?
I think it was like around 1,800.
1,800, 1,800,000?
Yeah.
How about the Fire Chief?
It was, it was a little less than him, not much.
Okay.
It was right in there.
And listen, I'm not here to pick on either one of you guys and I support the police. My son's a police officer. Okay. So I'm not here about that, but the, one of the reasons I want to talk about a little bit is this is what happens because this is really about the out of town tax credit. That's what this whole meeting is about. That's what we finally got around to. Some people got tired of waiting and they left. But it's about the out of town tax credit and I want to bring up your guys' attention. I'm one of those people that work outside the city. Okay. I've worked outside the city since I got out of the military. There wasn't the jobs that paid what I can make outside the city and that's where I went. Okay. So I'm one of those people that pay about 60 to 75 dollars a week in gas plus wear and tear on the vehicles. And I've came up here and I've said it in front of the city council, so I don't come up here and say the exact same things all the time. But those of us, what happens is when you're in a case like mine, you come up and you speak on behalf of your money because that's what you're asking to do. You want me to take a 2% pay cut is what you're asking me to do. And anyone else who works outside the city, you're asking them to do the exact same thing, take a 2% pay cut while other people get raises. And I understand that people want raises for inflation, the cost of living, you know, what is a dozen eggs, $6, whoever it is, I don't go shopping. But the point is the inflation and everybody's affected the raises that you fought for the firemen to get, for the police to get, the same raises that, that they fought for because of inflation and cost of living, we also have to endure that ourselves. We have to do what the inflation and cost of living is also. So and anytime you go up and mention this, it's kind of like talking about the schools. If you don't, if you don't support the school level, you don't support the kids. If that's the case, I support the police department, I support the fire department. But you can, when you say anything, it comes across as, as that you don't. What I, what I don't support, like when it comes to the water bill, for example, when we was talking about it, if my water bill goes up, I might not like it, but my neighbor's water bill goes up also. But when it comes to those that work outside the city, what you're asking me to do is pay four and one quarter percent of my total income to just city taxes alone, which is twice what my neighbor pays. Now someone will say, well, you have to pay for the services. If you don't pay for the services, then you shouldn't receive them. My wife has, has worked in the city of Bucyrus for the past 30 years. She's been paying city income tax to the city. So there's nothing in my house that hasn't been for, that hasn't already been paid for by her. All right. So I just, and I feel bad coming up here and talking, I always feel like I'm attacking the police and I wasn't asking you guys what you make because it's public anyway, you can figure that out. But I think you guys are very well paid and what's happening is if you look, when I was a kid growing up, the best jobs you could find, you could possibly find was Tempkin, GE, those are the best jobs. Right now, the best jobs you can find is working for the city of Bucyrus. That's where the money's at. All right. So a couple of those things that I want to bring this stuff so I don't forget about it, the half percent, we had a levy that went out and it failed. What is one of those numbers was on that past levy that went out?
Property taxes.
How many, how many, how much that failed by? If we're going to do something.
200 sub votes failed by.
Okay. So if you're going to do something that you want to make it fair, then what you need to do is you need to put something on there that's fair to everybody. That way, if I pay more in taxes, so does my neighbor. Now that had a good opportunity to pass. It wasn't advertised. I think I seen it in one person's yard and that was Chris's. It kind of came quick and you put it on there at the exact same time, my property taxes increased by 46%. Okay. I really think what you need to do is get out and speak to everybody and not just target those who work outside the city because what makes us feel like we're the villains, we're already paying the same amount of income tax that everybody sitting in here is already paying. We're just saying it's not, it's not fair to expect us to double up and pay twice as much, take a cut and pay. We're already spending money just to go back and forth to work. Now I think what's going to happen, if you're not careful, like you guys, isn't the road levy and the safety forces levy coming up in July?
The street levy.
The street levy, what about the safety, what about the other one?
The safety forces, that was a couple of years yet.
Okay. But regardless, so for me, for example, if, if you guys are looking at doing this, when that road levy comes up, that's a no vote for me, automatic because that's a half percent of my income back in my pocket. So if you're not careful, what's going to create it is all these people that work outside the city is about 1,300?
1,700.
1,700. Imagine when 1,700 people show up and start voting, know every time you put something out there. So you've got to kind of be careful. I think the only way to do it and to be fair about it is instead of targeting us, you know, and if you, if you look at that chart, it kind of went quick, but if you're making, those of us that work outside the city, don't go outside the city for $30,000 a year. Okay. It wouldn't be worth it. So those are those that, that work outside the city and make decent money, you're going to see, you're going to notice it when you get your paycheck and it's all of a sudden it's minus $60 or it's $100 less per pay. And there's a lot of people that I don't think the city realized, especially those in the city council, that have no idea this was going on. I spoke to someone today at work, I seen Elizabeth Sires works in Mansfield and I said, hey, you know what's, what they're talking about tonight? He had no idea. I said, well, I see, maybe I'll start paying attention because that's what they're looking at doing. So I think what's going to happen, that's 1,700 people that's going to find out when they get their paycheck one day is hey, they did away with your, with that tax credit. I called a double tax because I'm already paying it where I work. So I, I just, I just think it's the wrong way to go. Not just because it's my money, I'm a, I'm a person who's about being fair and I just don't think that take, making a certain group of people pay twice as much taxes as someone else is the solution because you're just going to target those people and I think in the long run, it's going to come back. So I, I hope you guys look at this differently. I know there's a few of them on the panel that's kind of got your mind made up about this. I don't know if it even gets to committee, if, if the city council even voted through, but I, I think this whole ideal of looking at, take away this income tax credit for those that work outside the city is just the wrong way to go. And I think it might come around in the long run and make things worse because for me, if you do it, I can't, I don't get the votes, I got no choice. But moving forward, if I retire in three or four years, once this happens, it's a no vote for me on any kind of a levy, any kind of renewal levy, everything's going to be about getting my money back. So thank you guys.
Bill Kennedy, 1467 Wetstone Street. This has been brought up numerous times. This is at least the fourth time. If it wasn't right three, four times ago, why would it be right now? The thing I don't understand is a lot of these taxes are a percentage. You know, so 10 years ago, I made $40,000. Now I'm making $50,000. So you're getting more. But you want more. I don't understand that. You know, if, if you're getting a percentage, when I make more, you make more. You know, we're voting, you know, there's numerous levies have been passed recently to get more and now you're thinking about getting more. You know, and I am tired of you guys holding this over our head, not you guys, sorry. Actually more Crawford County now than anything, you know, giving their opinion. But, you know, drop it. Thank you.
Hey, Lisa Lawson, 1323 North Sandusky Avenue. I don't know, I just got my taxes done yesterday. Mansfield City raised their taxes. They're two and a half, or two and a quarter, sorry, two and a quarter. So now I'm going to be expected to pay four and a half. I'm not real comfortable with paying $3,400 a year in city taxes. I'm just going to tell you that on top of the property tax increase and the water bill increase. I understand that you have to find money. A hiring freeze is obviously necessary. I, I don't care. No offense to you guys. I own, I have a gun and I ain't never had to use the fire department. I don't know what else to say because you just handed out raises when you didn't have the money to do it. Not just little bitty raises, big raises. I've never gotten a raise like that. I've had the same job for 30 years. I work seven days a week. I volunteer to go in. You can bring industry here, but I don't think you're going to find the workers because the work ethic is completely gone. It's just gone. The housing shortage, mm, it's not really a shortage. It's they don't want to live in them dumps. That's what it is. Because people who are younger feel like they should be able to have everything new and they should walk into a $70,000 a year job, not earn it, walk into it. They won't work at Tempkin because it's hot and it's dirty. I've worked at Baja slapping fiberglass. You do what you got to do to take care of your family. That attitude is gone now. So I don't know what the answer is, but it's not even just a job shortage or a housing shortage. We have to figure out what we can eliminate. Period. I, I see the wages on that list. They ain't hurting and I'm leaving town to work. I've worked in Mansfield for 30 years. That's decent money. They're making decent money and they're living here, they're not driving here. I'm not saying cut people's pay. I'm saying I don't care what you have to cut or you're going to run people out of town. And like J.R. said, I am not voting for a street levy. I will not vote for another safety forces levy. I won't say who, but a member of council stated that you don't have to go by what past council said because I was promised if you pass this safety force levy, we won't touch the credit. If you pass this increase on tax, we won't pass, we won't touch the credit. But you went back on it both times and I'm not saying you as, as, but that's what's happened. So we've been fed, so at this point, go ahead and take it, but you'll never get another dime out of me and I will campaign against the levies. Sorry.
Kurt Fankhauser, 1415 Michigan Drive. The, I'm, I was kind of, I thought this meeting was about fire and police staffing. I was kind of a little bit shocked here that there was so much discussion about the water fund. But do we know how much in the red that the water fund is? Do we actually have that number?
I was told she wouldn't have that number until after the gap conversion is complete in May.
Okay. So is it over seven figures in the red? Okay. So I have heard rumors in the last couple of weeks that it might be as high as 1.7 million in the red. Okay. Now, it was stated tonight that council was first told about this on December 17th, this Water Works Fund being in the red in the auditor's report in that meeting. Okay. I'm looking at the auditor's report from that meeting on the 17th and it says pertaining to the Water Works Fund, after finding some issues with the Water Works Fund, due to incorrect information I received during budgeting last year, some of the anticipated revenue streams have not materialized. Unfortunately, those products, projects that relied on the revenue coming in were slash are ready underway, meaning the Water Works Fund is currently operating in the red. Okay. I, I remember when that report came to council and, I mean, I, I didn't know how far it was in the red. It didn't say in the report how far it was in the red. I assumed it was, I don't know, 10,000 in red or something? Now I'm hearing that it's one, over a million dollars potentially in the red? Okay. And it's, it also, okay, this press release that went out by the administration, it's dated January 27th, 2025. It says, "The city of Bucyrus is in response to ongoing budgetary constraints announces a layoff within the water department effective February 7, 2024. This difficult administrative decision was made after consideration of the city's financial situation and after exploring all other options to maintain services and minimize impacts on employees. As this is an administrative function, city council was not involved in the decision-making process, only becoming aware after information was given to the press." Oh. It says down here towards the, the end of it, it says, "The Water Works Fund 701 was found to be in a deficit in the budgeting process. The city auditor held a meeting with local government services representatives on December 6th, 2024." If this Water Works Fund was known to be possibly seven figures in the red, why wasn't there an emergency meeting held with the citizens of Bucyrus that week? That week? This has been two months. This has been two months. I'm finding some of this, I'm putting the pieces of the puzzle together here tonight because I had no idea that this meeting was so focused on the Water Works Fund, but now it's all making sense. It's all making sense. Okay. So why is stuff not being told to the public when an emergency, I, I consider a seven-figure deficit huge. Okay. So this was known by admission that beginning of December, it was known. And then on the 17th of December, administration requests for pay raises. I wonder why they requested the pay raises now knowing that there was a deficit. Okay. And then this is on top, this is, this Water Works thing is totally separate from the general fund being 300,000, you know, underwater this year. This is a whole separate discussion, two separate things. Okay. It sounds like the city of Bucyrus is really, really, really in a bad situation financially. Okay. And it sounds like things are not being brought out as quickly as the public should be finding out about. It sounds like things are being withheld a little bit. And so, you know, I, I don't, you know, this, this, is the administration wanting to use the income tax credit to balance the Water Works Fund out? Is that, is that where this, this discussion is going? You know, and if this thing is that far in the red, what options do we have to get it in the black? I mean, what, I mean, are we going to have to put an emergency like surcharge on everybody's water bill for a couple of years here to get this thing in the red, in the black again? Is that what this meeting is about? Don't know. Now, if the city loses control financially, if the city can't get their act together, this is the worst case scenario that can happen. If the city, you know, what, what if we give, where did another fund is went in the red or something? You know, we get to the point, see, general fund money can be put anywhere. If you have an excess of general fund money, it can, it can balance out one of these enterprise funds if, if you have money in the general fund to do it, but we have no money in the general, we have no extra money in the general fund. So that puts us in a situation where we might have to ask the state, if we make too many mistakes and this gets away from this city, the state can give you money, but you know where they get that money? They do a special property tax assessment against all the property within that municipal corporation. It's not voted on either by the voters. So if, if the people in this room can't figure this out and the state comes in, this could lead to a situation where property tax goes sky high to pay for the, I don't want to cuss right now, but I'm going to say the screw ups of the city.
Let him, let him have his time and you'll have the equal time, please. Thank you.
Okay. So I, I wanted to explain the situation that kind of I became aware of tonight because I don't think the first hour and a half of this meeting, I, I think could have been said in four sentences. It could have been said in four sentences. Somebody messed up. We thought we had an extra million dollars. I really want to know what the deficit actually is in the Water Works Fund. I really want to know what the deficit actually is in the Water Works Fund. I really want to know that number.
Hi, my name's Brian Reeves. I live at nine hundred East Street. First of all, I want to say I'm for the first responders. I'm here for an idea to suggest something to help them out. Now, Mr. Myers, when I was here last time, you said that the fire department runs off a soft bill. Can you explain that to me again, please?
Chief, do you want to answer that or you want me to try to answer it?
I think, so more or less what that means is we accept what the, obviously you accept what Medicare, Medicaid pays and we accept what your insurance pays. There's no, we don't go after you for the extra cost.
Right, I understand.
And what, and what it, and the, the thing is, is if we were to try to hard bill, um, there's an extra fee for us to do it. And the, the amount of money that we're looking at is, like I said, sixty-eight percent of our calls are Medicaid, Medicare. It's a small amount of money and it's just, it, it creates, um, it creates another hostility towards the, the, towards us, being that you're already paying taxes. And so be, when you're paying taxes to, to help provide our service and then also hard billing, people tend to get upset about that.
Well, I want to just make that, that simple. I have right here a bill that's added network, five thousand eight hundred, or five thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. That's added network to have my daughter transfer Bucyrus to Cleveland. We worked with the insurance company and they dropped it down to two thousand eight hundred sixty-five and twelve dollars. That would be like a added network, network charge. Okay? Now, you say we're soft bill, that you take what you can get. And then what, does the city take the loss from what you can't get from Medicare or something like that? The point I'm getting at is I'm stuck with this bill no matter what, whether it's a soft bill or not. If I don't pay it, it goes to collection, collection takes me to court, they garnish my wages. So I'm the one who brought up about the ambulance and the thing. We have a fire station that you guys are trying to sell. Okay? I have some numbers here that I wrote up. And this might say to the city, I mean, you say it's not worth it, but to me, if you can make two thousand to four thousand dollars a, a year, wouldn't that help out the city a lot? We have three hospitals that are within twenty minutes from each other. And you have a Vida both as one. And we talked to Mr. Myers at the meeting, sorry to bring you out, but you're the one brought it up. He, he said, we, it all looks good on paper, but what happens if somebody comes in and gives a sweet deal? Then you lose it. Well, why can't we be the ones giving a sweet deal to the, to the hospital to get them deals to help out the citizens? I had to sit at the hospital for almost twenty-four hours for a thirteen-year-old kid to get transferred to Columbus, because they couldn't get no ambulance, or to Cleveland, sorry about that. Uh, they couldn't get an ambulance service to come transfer her there, because they had nobody that would do it. Now, you can sit there and say, well, we don't have the money. Well, why don't we do a one-point-five mil levy for equipment only? That gives the fire department a million dollars, or the police department a million dollars. You say you gotta pay ten thousand dollars for the recorder and your cameras and a new cruiser costs about, about eighty thousand? Give or take?
I think about sixty-three to sixty-five.
Okay, so if you average a hundred thousand dollars for your equipment and your cars, that should give you ten nice cars, right? Within a three-year span. Take the other five hundred thousand dollars and start that transportation service and give it a try, I said, because, look, I got it right here on the network. Two thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, if you do one run a day, that's seven runs. That's twenty thousand fifty-five dollars. If you did that for fifty-two weeks, that's a one million forty-two thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. If you did it twice, that's eighty-five thousand seven hundred twenty bucks. I mean, you don't think that'd be worth to try to give it a shot? I mean, because if you do that, it almost would self-fund the fire and the police department in the long run. Because if you can make a million or two million a year in ten years, you're a twenty million. By then you can have your wonderful fire station you want and maybe we can get a police department to get their police station. Because honestly, does the police department get revenue? How do they get the revenue? You don't, because you don't have a police station, right? Pretty much.
Do we get, I don't think that we are set up to be revenue collectors unless you want us to write a million parking tickets and sit out and write speeding tickets and things like that, which I don't think, I wouldn't do that to anybody here.
Pretty much you can say the police department's handicapped every year and reliable for the city and, uh, people of Bucyrus to help fund the police department, right? I'm not, I'm not trying to put your point.
No, we're funded through like city income tax, I think, just like they are.
Right. What I'm saying is that without a police department, you don't get the revenue that normally somebody else would because of the inmates out of, out of town, get more and stuff like that. I'm just trying to prove a point. I mean, because if the money's there, why wouldn't you try it? I mean, it's worth a try. You're not gonna have no money invested in a building. You have the building already. I know you're trying to sell it, but why wouldn't you, and, and towards the ambulance, there's pe- there's people that are selling ambulance that you can refurbish for like a hundred thousand dollars. I know you'd rather have a brand-new one going out, but we have to make ends meet. If, if you don't interest in that, then the only other option is to lay people off or make cuts to where the city's gotta lay off people. I mean, I'm just here trying to suggest some points to the city where either that or you're gonna have to take cat, tax cuts from people that obviously you've seen everybody's mad about right now. You know what I mean? Or you're gonna have to Anox properties in order to get taxes. For that point, I mean, I don't want to see no fire department or police department get laid off, but if that's what it takes to make the budget, I'm sorry, that's what we gotta do. But there's options, but everybody don't want to try them. And they want to make everybody pay all the taxes on their stuff. And it, to me personally, it's pushing people out of the city, not keeping people in the city. Because it's cheaper to move away than it is to stay in the city and keep on getting all the taxes. Thanks for your time.
There's packs of three, there was three, three for you two. I emailed it to him. All right, so Clarissa Slater, thirty-six forty-five State Row Four. First of all, I don't blame the administration for wanting to explain themselves, because I've been you. There's so much noise that if you feel like you have to explain everything. So I think it completely deflated half the people that came here tonight. I had to come late anyway, but I know why it was done. I just don't think it was tactful. So that's just my, getting started, that's my, my feedback on that. But, um, good evening though, council members, city administration, and my fellow citizens of Bucyrus. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I come before you. A citizen deeply concerned about our city and future and recent events, including attacks on citizens, businesses, the city itself, and misrepresentation of facts and intentions reminds us how urgent our challenges are. I apologize for my voice in advance. I am recovering from laryngitis. I'm just gonna put it like this, if the city was a ship, we get to individually choose how we are going to handle what happens next. The options are clear. We can all go down together. We can jump ship individually. Um, we can stay to try to salvage what's left and I'm choosing the latter. The choice is up to all of us to make and what's best for our family and community. So Kurt had already kinda touched on this. There is a couple worst-case scenarios, um, if we do absolutely nothing, which we obviously know this isn't a choice. The public safety could be eroded. We could lose our safety services. Their equipment can fail. They won't have the proper finances for staffing and that's not for any, anybody. Our city infrastructure is already running on a pretty slim, slim staffing. And our lines, our water lines, our sewer lines, they'll keep deteriorating. And our financial crisis will get worse, which will lead to a deeper deficit, forcing emergency spending and inevitably heavier on tax, um, heavier expense on taxpayers. And lastly, no one wants this. The state comes in and basically just decides what to do with the city and what's left. So obviously, nothing is not a good answer. Um, so what is, what can we do? It's money in, money out, and I know that probably sounds like an oversimplification, but there's two ways of fixing the budget is to bring in more money or spend less money. So I've been, you know me, guys, you've kinda gotten used to me, but I just took an emerably amount of time to look at a couple of different things. Um, first of all, I just want to commend our utility department. I got to sit down with John and I just kept, for years, we talked about how this, this new water department's gonna make us money. We're gonna make so much money. It's on par with Delco. It's such a great thing. So I was wanting to know from the people who run it, what is going on that, a system that's supposed to make this money, why aren't we making the money? And so I got with the utility department and I just did a basic records request and asked for, um, the water usage. And, um, I sat down and spoke to John and I sat down and spoke to Tommy. I had brief conversations with Chad, uh, not schwimly, help me out here, guys. Thank you. Chad Slagle previously as well. I have not had a chance to talk to Jeff, so I try to make my best to make my rounds with the time that I have, because I also work a full-time job. But long story short, um, I went ahead and did some comparables to other cities. And essentially, Bucyrus is maybe the only one left in the state that is still doing a reverse tiered system for bulk water. That means the more that you use, the cheaper it is for you to use it. It means it incentivizes high water usage. Um, most municipalities are doing the exact opposite. They are charging more when you use more to de-incentivize strain on the infrastructure. So that means that we are incentivizing our heavy consumers to use more. I sat down with Tommy and that's where that seven fifty number came up with. They're not gonna find, you know, people are going to probably nay-say it, say, well, that's already too much. It's gonna cost these large users too much, but they're gonna be hard pressed to find, to re-establish somewhere else and to find somebody who's doing what we're doing, because nobody else is doing it. So that's something that we can look at and I believe that's mostly administrat- an administration function. The other thing that I want citizens to understand is that we are currently paying for the infrastructure maintenance for the out-of-town properties. Your income taxes, I'm sorry, yeah, your income taxes, your property taxes are the only things funding the servicing of the water lines and the sewer lines. Um, well, not the sewer lines, I apologize, for the water lines for these expansions. Out-of-town is paying for their water. They are just paying for the water that they're using. That doesn't make up for the miles and miles of water lines that are going to these extension product, projects. So I know we need to stay competitive to get more people on, because the more users you have, the more profitable the system is, I get that. But in the meantime, how do we maintain this transition? And so there has to be some sort of middle ground where there's some sort of flat fee or there's some sort of percentage. It used to be a hundred and fifty percent. I know we've talked and you said that's not really keeping us, um, competitive with our current rates. But it looks like it just really needs to be kind of like a deep dive analysis on how we're charging for water, because do we need to charge as much per unit? If we move away from this bulk water system that we have? Now, Nevada's a completely different story, because I think they touched on it. Nevada's actually has their own utility department, so they're paying for their, their infrastructure. We're not having anything to do with that. So a tiered bulk water purchase, I think that, you know, doesn't really necessarily have to be changed. I think we're locked in a contract with them, so it's not like we can if we wanted to, nor do I think we should, because they're paying for their maintenance. But all that being said, that's just the water. And I said, I, because I just sat down and, and asked those questions myself. There's other things we can do and I have this online too, guys. I shared it to my Facebook. I know I'll probably get smacked in the mouth for even mentioning it, but I did share it online. This document's online for anyone to look at. There's other things we can do. We talked about vacant property, uh, registration. That was something, just because it's just a deterioration on, on our city. It brings down everybody else's properties and it's definitely a problem. Um, I hope that we can address that. And the hotel and lodging tax, it is not a ton of money, guys, but we are one of the lowest in the states at three percent. Columbus is at six percent. And we don't do any of our short-term rentals like Verbos or Airbnb. Mind you, there's only like five, but I mean, every little bit, right? I mean, that's something that could be growth in the future if it's in, uh, in step now. That would almost double our revenue if we take from the bed tax, um, in the revenues packet that I prepared. Uh, I pulled the numbers. Uh, the city's percentage would almost be fifty thousand. That would be up from thirty if we did a five percent and if it was seven, it would be seventy. A lot of, um, other towns, uh, actually have both a county tax and a city tax. We do not. We only have a city tax. So six percent is still kinda low, because, uh, the county's not taking a portion. Um, lastly, I know we keep hearing the, the county wants, I, I was at a, at another event that I had to go to, but listening to Mayor Truca, I keep hearing the county wants this for our water, the county wants this for our water. I mean, why, why isn't a percentage being asked long-term investment-wise? If they, if they have plans for the city's water infrastructure, why aren't they also investing in it? I feel like that's a big question. Um, us being a county seat, we seem to carry a lot of, um, well, Bucyrus carries a burden, um, for the county as a whole. And I feel like that's one of them. And guys, this is something, we're all gonna have to put skin in the game. The breadwin- the main breadwinner in my house, I'm not, I'm not making a ton of money. I mean, I'm not making bad money, but my husband makes the fair, you know, the lion's share and he has to drive to, to, to Columbus to do that. And so that's a lot of strain on our, on our relationship, on our family. You know, it's a, a huge time commitment. But I know you're gonna have to take some of it. It's just inevitable. And everybody's gonna have to have skin in the game, these whole like no-win scenarios of all or nothing. You take my tax, I'm not doing anything. It's, we're all gonna have to make sacrifices, I get that. So you're gonna have to probably take a portion and it's all gonna have to be, everyone's gonna be hurting. But things that I thought about management-wise, you guys are gonna have to probably do a hiring freeze. I mean, Mr. May's probably familiar most and most, the state had to do it for, I don't know how long. It was in it for a long time, I feel like, for the state. Pay freeze, pays are gonna have to get locked. Overtime reduction, I know this thing's easier said than done, guys. I know I'm like probably preaching to the choir, but, um, overtime is a bleed on the city. There's, I had an opportunity to sit on a, on a conference with, um, Napoleon's, um, city manager. Um, and he did discuss their model about having part-time EMS and fire and they have contracts negotiated with them. They are locked into a certain timeframe, so the, the expenses for, you know, providing the equipment, they would have to pay them back if they left. But they said majority, I think they have twenty, uh, part-time, working twelve-hour shifts. They have twenty and they're about twenty-five percent lower, uh, population than us. And they have twenty part-time and they all work at another municipality. And they pick up a shift once a week as additional revenue. And that's, you know, you're not gonna have to pay for, um, I mean, here guys, benefits for them. I mean, I know it's not something we've ever done and change is hard for everybody, but, you know, we're all having to kinda put our, like I said, skin in the game, right? So there's different staffing models we just have to like actually get proposal plans for. And I know there's counterpoints. We'll be driving business away if we raise stuff. We'll be, you know, compromising public safety. There's gonna have to be strategy. It's all strategy, really. And we're all gonna have to take a little bit of a, you know, kick in the gut. I get that. And I know, where's my, what about my out-of-town tax credit? That seems to be the biggest point of contention. And like I said, same here, guys. Take it, take all of it if you have to. I'm not gonna be happy about it. You're putting the, the people who are starting out in their careers, the people who, you know, are the workforce, and you're punishing, and inevitably, you're punishing them. And I get it, it's not your fault that it's set up this way. It's the state's fault. And maybe there's something we can do about crowdsourcing and creating some sort of case study for them to understand how this is affecting the public and how much it's affected our town. There's gotta be ways that we can work together. I prepared both an expense management proposals and a revenue proposal. You guys are welcome to use any of this. I'd be more than happy to, um, do records requests to get more comparables to see what we can do to, for actually bringing some money around here. But, um, biggest thing, guys, is that, and my, my biggest criticism, and I've not always been the greatest at it either, is the communication is terrible, guys. I mean, the communication breakdown in this city management legislation. And it's not, it's not any one person's fault, it's just a culture. Like, we have to get past it, like, they- Like, we have to get past it, like, they, if everyone feels like, I can see it on the camera, you guys just feel like everybody's holding their breath, afraid to say the wrong thing, and feel like they have to explain every little thing they're doing. I get it, and I, it's probably partially my fault, too, that you guys have felt like that before, and I'm sorry, my part of it, but, man, like, it's a lot of work. Um, I, I respect each and every one of you guys, this is a lot, I about wanted to rip my hair out looking at it, so, thank you for your guys and everything you do, um, please take the time, look over that, you might be able to do some, um, referrals out tonight with that, um, information for legislation, but any questions I can answer about either of those things, please let me know, and good luck. Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, come in, yeah, you know what I meant. Long night, guys, thanks.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Mr. Myers, as the chairman of the finance committee, when were you told about the Waterworks Fund going belly-up?
As Mr. Frank Hauser mentioned, it was mentioned in that meeting, when, what was the date you said?
So, you knew on the 17th of December?
We knew exactly what he just said, that there was something that we didn't know.
But you knew then, before we even talked about the budget, before the budget got approved, you knew about this fund, you knew that this fund tanked, and you knew that Tommy Starnes was going to give the 4.25 an hour raises without just a verbal saying of it. That is pathetic, sir, I'm sorry, what, that's pretty pathetic. You gave all these raises, this council voted for them, except for who didn't vote for them, okay? And now, we're deeper in the, deeper in the hole. Some people, I'm not going to repeat some of the things some other people pit, pay, uh, said, because, uh, I don't believe it's, it's already came out. But one thing I want to state is, don't blame someone else for this, the auditors shouldn't own the money, or money was there, or is this just another cover, cover-up with the city? So, my thing is, let's sell the water treatment plant and all the systems to, to a private company, other cities have done this. Okay? So what? Let's go out for a contract for the trash, okay? Somebody said, oh, this out-of-town person pays this for trash, well, let's look at a contract for the city, could it be cheaper? Who knows? But I think that needs to be looked at, you know? Yes, out-of-town rural people pay more, because it's more drive time, city's not. On the land, uh, farmland contracts, yeah, I will agree with some people that maybe they should be three years, but I think there ought to be an opt-out clause put in those, okay? Yes, we should sell all the land that the city owns, if we need money, that's an idea. And I understand, uh, from, uh, Tommy Starnes, that there is some land that we cannot sell, so I think an idea that I have talked to Kendall Rose from the OSU Extension Service is to come up with community gardens and feed our people in this community with that land that has water lines or sewer lines running through it, we could actually do good. She's very interested in this project that I brought up, and she said, we can actually get a master gardening program going, because there are five other counties around us that have that. Uh, the other thing is having organizations take over some of the parks, okay, and let them take care of it, we could save money. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, but the partnership, I disagree with you, sir, I think we ought to take $28,000 of that $50,000 and put it into a grant writer and use it for the best interests of this city. Without the wastewater treatment plant coming online, we're not going to get anybody in here until, what, now, 2033, 34 now? So, and I heard there's some other issues with wastewater treatment plan also, so as a whole, we need to look at that. For the police department, I will applaud the police chief for doing what he can with what he has. I'm sorry that he has to deal with this, but we need officers on the streets, okay? Plain and simple. Maybe the administration staff should maybe look at helping their officers out a little bit, and go out and ride on the street with these guys, okay? Get out of the office, maybe go ride as a second person to help pitch in when they need somebody. Eight, 12 hours a week, that's not hateful. Chief Teach used to do it, and some of the other four chiefs used to do that, they were, they hit the beat, when they were in trouble and new things were going on, they got in a cruiser and went out and did what they had to do. Uh, two, two, two. The other thing, too, and I'm going on record, and so be it, is that, Mr. Myers, I degree, I disagreed with you on months on the two levies, but you didn't want to divide the safety forces, what happened? It failed. No support from this council in passing that levy. I will stand here before everybody right now and ask this council, this finance committee or whoever has to do it, is to put a police vehicle only, 1.5 mil levy on, and let the voters decide, and let their voices be heard, not this council, let the people decide if they want to spot, support that or not, then you know what the really issues are. About the fire department, nothing against these guys, but the overtime needs to stop, okay? If we have to, if you guys have to look at the six-man shift rule needs to go away, so be it. Hiring a part-time firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics needs to be implemented, okay? The fire chief stated that it takes 18 part-time people to one full-time per, person. I have not found that study, I even called several people I know in the fire service, very well-known people, can't find nothing about this, I've been researching all week. Maybe the chief can give me a copy of that study. What's the difference between a firefighter with a 200-hour card and EMT card, or a paramedic card that is certified by the state of Ohio? And basically, there's no difference. Not if you're volunteer, part-time, or full-time, there is no difference whatsoever in that state-issued card. We all have to meet the same requirements, no matter what level you are, you have to meet certain requirements by the state to renew your license, so there is no difference. Okay? So, with the current overtime being paid out, I think it, we need to look at possibly putting on part-time peo- people. The overtime that this city has paid out last year in the last couple of years in that department is outrageous. And I will go on a limb on this, and if I get ran over by the bus, so be it. So, basically, I wanted people to know, based on people that are going to retire out of police and fire, it's based on their last three years of their salary of their service, okay? So, someone made $100,000 a year for their last three years, taking that by three years, and then you divide it back down, they made basically $100,000 for their retirement, and they get between 60 and 80% of that. That's a good retirement check, in my book. And now, since the governor signed the legislation, now they can get social security also now, which is unbelievable of that, too. Also, the number of officers in the fire service, we have three captains and six lieutenants, that's half the total employees of the city fire department. This should be cut down. Yes, that's a one officer to one firefighter ratio, okay? So, we need to look at what we can save money. Is it true that the city is going to fund $8,000 of the festival this year? That's kind of interesting. The finance commit- committee has pushed all of this onto the taxpayers, and this count, uh, this council has been approving it. So, no more raises, I agree, pay freezes, okay, until January 2026. Possibly lowering the work rate down to 32 hours a week, we can save some money there, too. What about the extra days off? Now, this is what I'm going to, I'm going to do a records request, I just wanted to let people know, straight up. So, after the holidays, city workers get an extra day off, is that in the contracts? Isn't that negotiated in the contracts? How much is that costing the city for those extra days off after Thanksgiving, Christmas, or whatever? How much is that costing the city? Are these people paying their comp time in, their vacation time, personal leave, or anything like that for that day off? No, the city's footing the bill for it, and I will find out how much of that is costing us, because I think that's a big chunk of money.
I did want to interrupt you for just a second, Greg.
Go ahead.
I did want to interrupt you for just a second and tell you that, um, those are days that we are requested to take off for the positions that can't take them off, but they are required to use vacation, personal, or unpaid time to take those days off.
Okay, that's fine, that's what I wanted to find out, I wanted to know the fact, the truth. Appreciate that, Kaylee, because obviously, some people in this council and some of the administration don't want to tell the truth all the time, they want to hide behind stuff. So, it's my understanding that certain reports are not clear enough, matter of fact, I was trying to read this stuff, and man, I'll tell you what, even sitting back there, you can't read the screen, and people have been texting me saying they can't even see it online, because the camera's not focused good enough on it, okay? So, maybe someone should look at making this better to understand for the people of this community. Uh, what about the, oh, yeah, here's the last thing, what about the insurance for the city employees? What is going on with this? The stall tactics on this is unbelievable, okay? What's being hidden from the public? What is, what, what I believe is there's a lot. What is the real cause of this mess, that this is all caused by whatever, the committee or commission, it doesn't matter? No one will give out the information that was asked for with a public records request. Quit hiding this stuff, tell us who, and why, when, how, and what's going on.
Who did you do the public records request to?
Uh, the mayor, service director, and then it got sent over to the law director. Okay? And I've been waiting, and I've been waiting for weeks now for this, and not even a reply back that they even say they are working on it, okay? So, let the taxpayers know what's going on, okay? The out-of-town tax credit, well, that's history, we're all going to be paying out the you-know-what for that, okay? So, basically, I believe that this is not, in the beginning of this, it was nothing more than a dog and pony show for the water fund, okay? We didn't really get to talk and discuss what we really wanted to discuss, we had to listen, listen to a bunch of nonsense that somebody made the notion, it could have been solved in less than 10 minutes. We're out of money, plain and simple, we don't know where it is, okay? Our city government's going to do whatever they want to, one of the, one mo- the one most thing they forget, the citizens can vote to stop this all. Remember, it states "we the people" and not "we the government." Thank you.
John Arnsberger, Water Distribution Foreman, uh, the first thing I'd like to, first thing I'd like to say is, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, chiefs, I'm not bashing you, I'm not taking away from you guys at all, but I've heard and listened and listened and listened week after week, or month after month after month about how, about the raises and everything else, and alls I hear is how Afsmi's doing, how we're getting this big, huge raise. Like, recall about three years ago that police and fire got a huge raise, and some people who are still speak month after month were the same people that stood right behind this podium and talked and backed the police and backed the fire, and now they're bashing them here tonight. It's, you either, you either bash them, you either back them, you can't do it both, okay? And remember, you're, you're the ones that backed them to get them to get, to get them the big raise that they wanted, okay? So, that's the first thing. Um, the second thing is, you stand here every, some people stand here every meeting saying the same thing, running their, running their soup coolers, saying the same thing month after month after month after month, it gets old, okay? You're either part of the problem, or you're part of the solution. If you're going to be part of the problem, just stay at home. If you want to be a part of the solution, run for council and put your teeth, put some teeth in the game. I'm tired, I, I'm not the only one that's get sick and tired of watching council meetings and listening to people run their soup coolers all the time. And thirdly, this was not a dog and pony show, okay? This was not a dog and pony show the beginning, what it was, and this is what I tried to do, but nobody ever wants to listen, because they're too busy forming their own stinking opinions on stuff, be educated before you speak. There's too many people running their soup coolers and their pie holes about not being educated on things that they, that they're not educated on things they're talking about. Understand what you're talking about, be educated, come talk to me, come talk to Jeff Dunn, go talk to Kaylee, the mayor, the chiefs, go talk to the people who you're bad-mouthing before you start running your jibs, okay? I would rather you come talk to me for an hour and then lie about me than just lie about me to my face, or lie about what I do, okay? People don't know what I do for a living, what my department does for a living, okay? If you guys, if anybody wants to come out 3 o'clock in the morning, when it's, when it's below zero and jump in a hole, feel free, I would love to have you out there, okay? But instead, what do I get? I get a guy that's laid off, is it any fault of mine? No. Is it any fault of the mayor, or Tommy, or anybody else? No, but guess what? I have to live with it. That's what we have to live with, and it's our jobs to do it. And we, I think we do a pretty doggone good job of it, despite people screaming and yelling on Facebook about the, about all the boil advisories. If you want to be educated about the boil advisories, call me, my phone number's on the, on the city's website, email me, my email's on there, contact me, I don't care, I'll sit down and talk with you for an hour just to educate you, okay? I had about a two-hour conversation with Clarissa the other day, why? Because she wants to be educated. It's not because she just running her mouth all the time, learn to be educated about not just my job, not just the fire and police, about everybody you speak about, because some of the things you come to find out may be false, and then guess what? You're eating crow. If you want to eat crow, that's fine, eat crow. I would rather you be educated about what we do for a living. Thank you.
Any other public participant?
Okay, just making sure.
Well, whoops. Dan Wireball, 1092 Martha Avenue, well, John took away about half of what I was going to say, so, thanks, John, uh, we, thanks, John, we appreciate you, okay? I'm serious, I'm not being facetious, you know me, uh, anyway, yeah, uh, so, like I say, so now I have to shift gears, because, uh, that's was the first thing on my list here, there's a lot of experts, a lot of experts come up here all of a sudden, you know? I didn't realize we had that many in town, there's a lot of scare tactics that come from this podium, I wouldn't, if I was the public, I wouldn't listen to any of them, any of them, we've got people that's saying Bussiris is a problem, even though they're part of the city council, uh, and I think we're probably pretty far from a state takeover right now, but, uh, anything can happen, so, uh, don't let any of that, uh, I guess for the citizens, don't let any of that scare you, I guess is what I'm saying, I've been up here a few times, so I know. Uh, I, well, first off, you can't tax yourself out of this situation, I don't believe, uh, the 2023 credit, oh, okay, so, I was listening to, uh, the, uh, income tax department, and I thought it was interesting that she said the 2023 credit given, uh, was like half a million dollars, but that, basically, is just about what I had figured, probably going on 10 years now, uh, that's what the city could gain if we would annex the people that were, meet our annexation policy. So, uh, just, anybody that doesn't know, if you're adjacent to the city of Bussiris, you're using our utilities, you have to be a part of Bussiris, but for 10-plus years, the administration has never, ever, uh, went after that, you know, there's money out there, and nobody's going after it, so, you want to tax these people, you know, they're up here complaining, but you could get just as much by getting the people that, uh, should be paying us, uh, there's nothing to do, there's no legislation to pass, there's nothing to do, it's in ordinance, all you have to, all the administration just has to go out there and say, "You annex, or you're, you don't have water, you don't have whatever." Okay, uh, and another thing I noticed about this whole discussion, housing wasn't discussed at all, several years ago, we spent at all. Several years ago, we spent $40,000, that was our share, to get a housing study. I guess that money was just wasted. Uh. We had, uh, I think one time, one time since that housing study, someone wanted to build some apartments and that didn't fly. Uh, and then the only other thing was, I'm not real clear on this, uh, the county water line expansion. I, I think a lot of that was misleading. Nothing, uh, nothing against you, Bruce. Uh, I just think the way it was set up, because, uh, I know typically, and there may have been a snafu where we didn't get money that we thought we were going to get, but typically, before a project starts, the money's usually sitting there in the bank. So I'm not, still not sure how all that happened. Uh, I don't know if it's a county thing or what. So, uh, but anyway, I guess my main point is just when people come up here, they want to complain, but just, just like, like I was saying, uh, you know, just come up, if you want to do something, you know, say something positive, don't just come up here and say, "You did this and you did that," because, yeah.
Talk about annexation a little bit.
Yeah.
So with the previous law director, I done a lot of talking with him about annexation. And there's only certain ways you can annex. So the easiest way to annex and probably the only way we can annex any properties that we use the utilities is they have to agree, the owners have to agree, the township has to agree, and we have to agree. It's like the triangle. If we can't, if we can't all agree-
Well, you know, if we're having a water deficit, maybe we shouldn't be sending them water. Yeah, everyone goes, "Ah." Well, I don't know.
We're going to turn our sewers off too while we're at it, right?
I don't think, I don't think we do any trash pickup for those. But, uh, anyway. No, I'm just saying, no, I wouldn't want to do that. And I don't, probably legally we can't. There'd probably be some injunction or something else.
I'm pretty sure there is.
But-
They set the water off.
I'm sure, but I mean, you know, we, we need to convince these people somehow that, now, we took that off. I was against that, to take off that 1.5%. Nothing's stopping us from putting that back on. 1.5% this year, 2.5% next year, 3.5% the next year. I bet they annex pretty quick. So, I don't know, I think there's a legal issue on that too, though, uh, that you can't raise it too high, but, uh-
It's outside water use.
Outside, people who are not in the city limits.
Right.
Yeah. And the thing is, you know, you, you say, "Well, yeah, they use our other services." They use the, you ask these guys. I'm sure the fire department and the police department's been outside city limits. Yeah, we have a, we have a, uh-
Contract.
Contract with the, with the, uh, townships, but, uh, we're, we're providing more than just water and sewer to a lot of those. So, I mean, there's money sitting there. I've been, you know, I've been preaching for 10 years on that, so the money's there, just go get it. So, and it's not just, it's not just your, you're not just getting the, the, the tax money from the residents. There's, was 20 properties that sit outside the city limits, that we can get income taxed from them. Okay? And it's not just the wat, we're not just trying to get like a little bit. We're talking a lot of money, so. All right. So that's, that's a way. So, thanks.
Could I ask the law director to look into annexation?
Sure. Something I've already been looking into.
Okay. I, I talked to about the previous law director, like I stated. But I'd just like you to look into it again, please. Thank you.
Uh, Logan Beaman, FreeWire. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just want to start by saying that it wasn't all that long ago I was a young person with a lot less gray hair. But time has a funny way of sneaking up on us, and now I find myself looking at the next generation and hearing a lot of the same complaints that every generation before us has made. I'll be honest, I've fallen into that trap myself. Just the other day, I was complaining about hard, how hard it is to keep young people's attention past a headline in an introductory paragraph. On average, people stop reading after about 27 seconds, so if you don't get their attention, then you're never going to get it. And it's, the younger they get, the less that number is, so. Uh, I've had my frustration, um, but let's be real, blaming the younger generation for all the prob, all of our problems is the easiest, most overplayed tactic that there is. It's low-hanging fruit. It's an excuse. We say, "Young people don't want to work anymore," but is that really true? Or are they just unwilling to work for wages that haven't changed in 20 years while the cost of living has skyrocketed? Uh, I'll single this out because I know she won't take it personally, but people don't decline working at Timken because it's dirty. They don't work there because they can make money elsewhere. It's not laziness, it's basic economics. Instead of calling them unmotivated, we need to ask ourselves, "What are we doing to make Bussaras a place where young people want to build their futures?" Uh, when I was in high school, way too long ago, we had, uh, our administration, I remember the administration talked about getting young people to go off to college and then come back. And let's be honest, that hasn't worked to any discernible degree. Because it's not enough to just tell young people, "Go get an education and then return." Uh, they will come back when they have a reason to, when there are competitive jobs, when there's opportunity, when there's a quality of life worth investing in. That's the real challenge we have to tackle here. Bussaras has a demographics problem, plain and simple. We have an aging population. We have more people retiring than are stepping in to replace them. And if we don't start thinking long-term, we're going to wake up one day and realize that our workforce has dried up, our businesses are struggling, and our community is shrinking. That's not just a problem for young people, it's a problem for all of us. So instead of pointing fingers at a younger generation, let's take a step back and ask the bigger questions. What do we need to do differently? How do we need to create an environment where young families want to stay? Uh, what policies, incentives, and investments do we need to make, make now to ensure that Bussaras isn't just surviving, but thriving 10, 20, 30 years from now? And I'm not standing here pretending to have all the answers. No one person does. Though I do know is that if we want to move forward, it has to start with real conversation about what's working, what's not, and what comes next. Because the future of Bussaras isn't something that just happens to us, it's something we build together. So let's stop the blaming, let's start planning, and let's make, make sure that Bussaras isn't just a place to grow up in, but a place they want to stay.
Any other public participation? Mrs. Shaw.
I had a constituent call me this evening before the meeting. Uh, she was unable to be here tonight, but asked if I could express some of her thoughts. And I said I would. First off, on the out-of-town tax credit, she stated to me that if we take away this credit, this will only be a temporary fix. If we take away this credit, the constituent has heard people say they will move out of town or they will not vote for any levies. As far as the police and fire departments, this individual has stated that she feels both are doing an outstanding job. She does have a little concern. She has a scanner that she listens to and is just questioning if maybe sometimes there's not a need for a second vehicle to go out when there's like a 911 call, if it's necessary to have both an ambulance and the fire truck. She said it's just a question that, you know, is sometimes, you know, her concern, especially when she's listening to the scanner. And she indicated to me, and I teased her and I said, "Are you sure that's what you heard?" And she said, "Yes." Someone will call in and say that they're having stomach cramps or a toothache or a hangnail. And so she said, "It's like, for something like that, is there the need, you know, for both?"
So the squad does not re-
Sorry, I said it wrong. The engine does not respond on every EMS call.
Okay.
They only go if the, if the, if the nature of the call, if we know that it's a large person, or if it's a more medically necessity to have additional hands, that it's more serious call.
And so then if the ambulance does not feel that's necessary to go, then is it just then the fire truck that goes, or?
So there's, there's fire calls where the only, the, the fire truck will go with, so more or less of a CO call or something like that where it only requires, because that's why the, the, and that's in, more or less, that's in my, uh, response report that will show that it, it's one of those, they don't, it doesn't add up or match that there's that many, um, additional responses for the number of calls that we have.
Great. Thank you for the answer. I'm sure she'll appreciate that as well. Um, as far as the $4.25 per hour wage increase, um, this constituent feels or is stating that she's not saying that employees do not deserve a wage increase, but she does question the amount of the increase. And she's concerned if the city can even afford this increase because of its current financial situation. So those were just concerns of a constituent that called and I indicated that I would present those. Thank you.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Row 4. One of the things I forgot to mention, I was kind of skimming, that I put in the, um, expense cuts was that I noticed, looking at, and please don't make this sound come against anyone in, in the public service, because it's not a criticism of you, it's a criticism of the structure. The way that our hourly rate systems work, um, I was a AFSMI member, uh, AFSMI steward on the state level, and the state has a unified, uh, table for their pay ranges. So it doesn't matter what department you're in, what union you're in, you're categorized into a pay table, and then that's how they negotiate wage increases. It's like standardized reporting. So it's basically saying that, I don't know how they tip the scales or how they decide your scope, um, your risk, all of those things are weighed, and then you're basically assigned like a category, and your pay steps and everything are in there. Um, I believe that we need a lot of unifying to do with that. I think that probably should happen, so we kind of have a better understanding of like comparable, like rates for wages instead of playing this versus game, it seems like every time the contracts come due. I think John was kind of hitting on that, was that it just seems like, oh, someone gets commended for getting a raise or someone doesn't take a raise, and then it's this fight between the three unions to get the best deal. And instead of doing that, I also think that maybe, um, it should be negotiated with the unions, and I don't know if people know this, but union negotiations are actually private. They're not subject to public record. Um, they are private. So that's another misconception I was getting from the public was they thought that we get to know everything that goes behind those closed doors. It's not an open record.
For the record, we don't even get to know.
Correct. You, the council does not know the negotiations. The only people that know would be the law, um, law director and the union, uh, management itself and, and also, you know, obviously administration. But if there's any way, and I think this would be beneficial for everyone, if those unions can get together and, and kind of look at the state's program and how they have it set up, I think it would bring a lot of streamline, streamlining to the system and a lot less of that, I mean, bickering, honestly. And it would stop the discourse in the public as well. And then lastly, um, to deal with that, I think it would also be helpful if, if the contracts were on the same schedule. And I know that's not always the easiest thing to do, because I mean, someone's got to take a shorter contract and someone to take a longer contract or vice versa, whatever. But if everyone was on the same negotiation schedules, um, you guys are actually going to be technically probably stronger, because it's going to be, not to give it away, but you're going to have three, three negotiating at the same time instead of three separate individual ones. But I think it'll stop a lot of the, uh, union, I hate to say, politics, but I mean, it is. Um, I was there, so I know. But, uh, yeah, that's my, um, my note on that. And then I, I wanted to make sure that it was also known that the sewer for out of town is actually already being taxed at the higher percentage. It's actually 200% of the regular inside rate, but that's only 1/3 of the properties that have water. So only 1/3 of this, uh, individuals who are out of town have sewer. Um, the water's still, they get the same rate as in town. Um, but, and, and the housing though, I hope that we can do something in the property maintenance that will hopefully bring up especially some of the north side apartments. My God, I had the unfortunate go off, going off Plymouth Street the other day. I was like, "Oh, my gosh, these poor people." Some of the properties are just, they're in such bad shape. We gotta do something, because it's not gonna, we, how can we justify bringing in more apartments when we can't even maintain the ones we have? And the housing study is online, guys. If, I know someone mentioned not knowing where it was, the housing study is online as well. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Melanie Ellis, 915 Southeast Street. I was up here and very disappointed. I appreciate the information that was presented, um, earlier, but I think a lot of that information should be stuff that's presented during the council meetings with regards to things that are going on. And to me, this town hall meeting was supposed to be a meeting for people to come and speak, and you've had people that got up and left because of how long it was taking. And I think, um, if you're going to have a town hall meeting and you want to hear from the public, then that should be the stuff you're hearing, not waiting an hour and 45 minutes to two hours before people get a speak. You know, JR spoke about the double tax, and that's what it is. It's been threatened many times. It's, you know, as Lisa said, you, it's been talked about, don't, you know, we won't take it if you pass a levy, and then it comes up again whenever the going gets tough. And I don't like to hear, I mean, Vicki, whoever, um, contacted you, the $4.25 an hour raise, no, nobody is saying that people don't deserve that raise. Um, and for anybody that thinks that, um, that's not what's being said. But knowing the financial situation that the city was in, for this council to have approved that $4.25 an hour raise was irresponsible.
Now, Melanie, if I may interject. Um, that $4.25 raise, we, well, I should say, certain members of council, because there were three of us that voted no, the AFSMI was approved. There has not been approval made yet for the council clerk, and the manpower has not been approved yet either.
But how many employees is the AFSMI contract entail? How many employees is under that contract?
And that I do not know. But I, I just, because, you know, a lot of people think-
No, I understand that.
-that everybody, and I just, yeah.
I know it was just the AFSMI contract, but $4.25 times 80 hours in a pay times 26 pays is $8,840 raise. And knowing just that in and of itself, and the situation that the city was in financially, and you guys knew that before you voted on it, and I'm not saying everybody, but it was voted on and approved by the council, is irresponsible. Now you have to look at, what are we going to do to make up the deficit? And out-of-town tax credit is always the first thing because it's the quickest and easiest thing to take. But you gave $4.25 an hour, um, so I think that at some point, some responsibility has to fall back to the administration and the council and knowing what situation you're in. And nobody disses the safety forces, but when you have 18-plus firefighters or however many it was that, maybe it wasn't 18, maybe it was 16, 15, are making six figures in a community of 11,000 people, when the median income is probably $50,000 is a little high. But, and I certainly hope, and I'm not saying that Miranda doesn't deserve a raise, but Miranda's been here for a year, and you're talking $4.25 and a dollar thank you raise? I'd like a dollar thank you raise, and I don't think that's going to happen. So I, I think we just need to act fiscally responsible, and that hasn't happened when, you know, to me, I think at this point, pay freezes cost savings days where people are taking days off with no pay. I mean, you're wanting to tax and take away a credit for 1,700 people that work out of town and not by choice, and you all understand that. You can't then say, "We're going to give our, our, a huge chunk of our staff an $8,800 raise and take 1,100 for a $50,000 median income, an $1,100 a year decrease in their income," not to mention, you know, they're paying city taxes someplace else. not to mention, you know, they're paying city taxes someplace else. So I just think that, you know, it's time to take some fiscal responsibility, and if the water fund is in that much trouble, and my thing is you gave a raise and then you had to lay off somebody. So again, to me, that's not very fiscally responsible. I mean, somebody shouldn't have had to have lost their job when you're giving out $8,800 a year raises to, even if it's 20 people. So, and I know they said, I think Clarissa said that you guys are already supposedly increasing the sewer rates to people that are not in the city, like the Timken subdivision, Timken itself. I mean, to me, they should be paying four and five times what we're charging, not 200%. They should be paying about 500%. I mean, we're fiscally, in an emergency here, in a fiscal situation, you need to be charging them way more money than what we're paying. And, you know, annexation has been brought up. Again, I know that there's some things to that, but that's been 10 years and it's not gone any further than where it was 10 years ago. So just start thinking about what it is that's happening and, you know, and I know that people say, well, you can't say, well, I won't ever vote for a levy, but if you're going to take my 2%, I'm not voting for a street levy, I'm not voting for a safety levy, I'm not, I've got to recoup that money somewhere and it's going to be where I can, and by voting no on the levies I have control over, and that I can mark as a no on the ballot. So JR said, that's 1,700 people that will probably vote no. So just thinking.
Sorry, on the Timken thing, I had forgotten that I wanted to say something, get on my soapbox for a second. We, I feel like the city is, we're putting Timken first at the expense of a lot of tax dollars that we could potentially be getting from just out of town people in general or businesses. And Timken is not what it was 20 years ago. The reason I brought up what Lisa said was because I remember growing up, Timken was the place everyone wanted to work, that they would bring in like a thousand applicants and hire five people. Well, they haven't increased their wages for 20 years now. I mean, they're the same, they're making the same as what I know people that used to work there two decades ago. It's basically the same wages, it's less benefits, and look at the cost of living in that time. So we're putting this one corporation on a pedestal, and for what? I mean, they've never done us so many favors. I mean, they, when they brought those thousand applicants in, they didn't care if they worked or they lived in Bussiris. They weren't hiring Bussiris people over other qualified candidates or anything. So, you know, there's, if you look at, you know, decades of us putting this one business on a pedestal at the expense of how much tax dollars, if just by them, I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then by virtue of the fact that we've put them on this pedestal, now we're not taxing that entire subdivision. Maybe that's part of the reason why we're not taxing, we're doing the reverse rate. Oh, that Clarissa mentioned, we're the only city that's doing that. I just wonder how much money we've left on the table in the past 20 or 30 years, just by virtue of the fact that we've put one corporation ahead of everything. And yeah, it's given a lot of people, a lot of good jobs for a long time, but at what cost, I guess? And I think we're here to discuss possible remedies, and I think, you know, maybe it's worth not giving so much, such a sweetheart deal to one small percentage of the pie when it comes to jobs in this community. And that's it.
Harold May, 934 East Warren Street. Kevin, on that last, on that ballot, how much was the mills for, on that, the one that we voted on last?
I'm looking at the auditor because I can't remember.
Yeah, so how much was it? Well anyways, so that was for the safety.
Three and a quarter is what jumps out.
Yeah, I think three and a quarter.
For the safety, it was for the safety forces, right? What did it take to put that back on the ballot? The reason I ask, because that's, I mean, that would be something, a fix that helps them out. Because like I said, you know, we need a security force, I'm not here.
We missed our deadline to go on the May ballot, so we'd have to wait till November at this point.
We need to get that on there, though, and we need to put it on there because in the meantime, we're trying to work through other problems that we have at Bussiris. We can at least try to work on that. Now, and that last time that was out, I supported it. Kurt, I sent you a message, I said, hey, give me a sign, I live on a four way corner, give me a sign, I'll put it in the yard. I mean, so I was going to come up with some type of solution, I said, I'll put it in the yard, you know, and where I live at, people go to vote, they drive right by that corner where I live at. So one of the solutions is get that back on there so at least when it comes to security forces or safety forces, you know, they have the money they need to operate, okay? Kurt, you brought up something that if we didn't get there and fix it, you said that the state was going to come in and probably raise their property taxes, right? That could happen, they could come in and raise everybody's property taxes. Worst case scenario. Okay, but key word, it's everybody's. Not just the seven, not come in and raise the people who live outside the city, raise their taxes, the 1700 people, let's come in and raise everybody's. And that just kind of goes back to what I said. If we're going to fix it, it needs to be something everybody pays and not just single out the certain individuals. And we get, and like I said, being a resident of Bussiris, lived in the same house for 33 years, and what happens, especially when this, anytime this out of town tax credit is mentioned, people like to fight for their money. You like to fight for your raises? I like to fight to keep my money. I work outside the city, I work hard, I make, I want to keep it. I pay enough in taxes, okay? So what it causes is just this, people come up here, they get aggravated, they say things they don't mean, they point fingers, they point fingers at the fire department, they point fingers at the police department, the out of towners are the bad people, you're not paying our share, and we need to come up with something that everybody pays. And like I said, I hate to see the state come in and do something like that, but the key was, key word to what he said was, everybody pays. So if you own property, you're going to pay. If you rent property, guess what? If I have a rental and my taxes goes up, your rental's going to go up. Now people at home probably hearing that saying, oh, no, we don't want that. Once again, people get a little bit more concerned about it being their money. It's easier to vote for stuff when it's, when it doesn't affect you. It needs to be something that's fair across the board, everybody supports it. And so if that does, for how much money it was, I'd have had to pay that. If I work outside the city, I would have paid it. And I just think that's a more fair way to go. And I know it's November, but the sooner we do it, the sooner I think that could pass. And then myself, other people work outside the city, get out there and help it pass. I mean, and I offered to do that the last time, and I said a sign right where I live would have made the difference. I didn't even know it was on the ballot until I saw it in Chris's yard, and a couple days I went to vote and there it was. So I think we need to get out there and advertise it, that supports the safety forces. I hate to say anything against them because when I do it, I feel like I'm singling them out and I'm not, but it just needs to go back to being fair so that everybody pays the same amount. So thank you.
The enterprise water fund being in the deficit as bad as it potentially is, I think we need to be having a meeting just for that in the off weeks of council. We need to have, like, this is an off week of council right now, so every Tuesday that's an off week of council, I'd like to see a special meeting called just to take care of that issue, discuss that issue only. Committee, committee. I don't know if it's, if service would be doing it too, or finance, or both, but to me, that is a.
Yeah.
Separate issue than the out of town income tax thing with safety forces, and I don't want to see them get mixed in together. And I'm hoping that we can get to this, this number of what the deficit is sooner than later, because the sooner we know or have a ballpark of what that is, the sooner we can start implementing some sort of.
A plan.
Plan, you know, whether it's, does the water bill have to go up some more? Does, you know, do we have to do something else? Does there have to be a special line item on the water bill? Do we have to ask the state for a loan? You know, is that something that can be done? Can we ask the state for a one or $2 million loan over so many years, special line item on the water bill? I'm just.
But did Kaylee, did you not state that you wouldn't even know what the figure was until the gap conversions completed, and that won't be until?
Yes, so it's an interesting process because they have to take out any kind of receivables that the city still has out that may come into effect. They have to combine multiple different funds, one of those being the county water fund, and say, the water fund fronted $300,000 initially to start up the county water fund so we could do those expansions, so that $300,000 from the projects would go, be completed, would be coming back into it. So it's just a lot that goes into seeing exactly how much that number would be.
So I guess my question is, until this gap conversion's been done, what purpose would having these off council week special finance meetings do right now?
I think we know there's a deficit.
Okay.
So I think we can still start, I actually like the idea.
Okay.
We could start talking about, you know, we've talked about, heard different ideas of, well, can we charge more for this, charge more for that? I think whether the deficit is $100,000 or $1 million or $10 million, we got to come up with some money. So I don't see why we couldn't devote, you know, a meeting to that, at least have one or two of them, I don't know about every other week, but I think it's a start. So I actually, I actually agree with that.
The thing that really, I think, needs to get out there sooner than later is, I mean, the auditor has not stated any exact amount, but yet there has to be, something has to be known, there has to be something on paper somewhere that has caused all these concerns and alarms to get raised. So what, I mean, why, can you give us like a ballpark between, I mean, just round it off to?
I don't think it would be very responsible to speculate. I think speculating would just cause more panic. We don't, we don't know until the gap cover, or conversion is.
Okay, so everything with the city is black and white with numbers, okay? So how can we sit here tonight? And there has to be a number somewhere. There has to be something written, otherwise what we're all talking about doesn't exist. So what happened, what event happened that is causing us to have this discussion right now? I mean, no, no, somebody knows a number and they're not saying, somebody knows a number and they're not saying.
If I may remind you, when I came on to council back in January, you sat there at that table and had your PowerPoint presentation and pretty much had us freaking out that we were in a financial distress. And finally, I spoke up and said, well, until we need to go to the state and have them come in and look at the figures. I want to hear from the state that we're in a financial distress, not from Kurt Fankhauser. And you did, I mean, you had this PowerPoint presentation and da da this and da da that. Well, guess what? We had the state come in and we were not in a financial distress. That is the third thing that you can get into. I don't have my paperwork in front of me, but you start out with the first thing, then there's a second thing, and financial distress is the third. Now, the state of Ohio or the, did state to us that, hey, we're not to the financial distress, and really, we haven't even, correct me if I'm wrong, Kaylee, in fact, you were even at that meeting, that we're not even at the first problem area, but we're close, and so don't sit and not do anything. Start looking at how you cannot get any closer than what you are. So while I appreciate you, you know, ringing the alarm bell and, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say, yes, we are and no, we not, no, we're not. I want someone that has a little more.
You don't believe that I have financial, some sort of intelligence to me that I can predict something?
No, I don't.
You don't believe that?
No, I do not. Sorry.
Okay, I run a business in town and it's not, it's not in the red. So, but I'm glad you brought up the thing a year ago, the presentation, okay? Everything I said in that presentation is starting to come true, okay? So I wasn't wrong. And the state auditor coming in, that whole meeting did not even factor in all the vehicle replacements that we're going to be needing. All that meeting was, is are you in the black still right now? That's all I can say, okay? I understand things that need replaced in the future, and I can see the writing on the wall before some other people can.
But you didn't from January of last year up until now constantly say, we're in a financial situation, we're having problems. I mean.
I couldn't, you know why? Because you guys were all talking about the cameras and stuff. That's where you guys.
Yep, all right, thank you.
I wasn't going to come up here, but I have to.
You're allowed to, Gary.
I've been sitting here all night.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know better than that. Been here enough. Gary Diabre, 1928 Marion Road, Bussiris, Ohio. Okay, you people know that I come to almost every meeting. Tonight, I came here, I didn't, I didn't hear one comment, not one comment about senior Where do you think, where do you people think we get our money? My income every month is $1,570 a month. About $40 of that a month goes into social security and Medicare. Now, what am I supposed to do? I try to keep a nice home. If you go through Bussiris and look at a lot of these homes, I'll bet you most of these homes that people live in are senior citizens that can't afford to fix up their homes. And I know it's just not the city, I'm not blaming totally the city, I know it goes all the way from the government all the way down, okay? For me, I'm trying to keep my house fixed up, Vicki. You know that, you've been there, okay? I try to keep it fixed up, but it's almost come to the end where I can't do anything more about it. It is what it is. You've been there, you've seen what I've done, what I'm trying to do, all of you know what I'm trying to do, and it's just coming up just about a halt where I can't do any of it. And I'm very, very disappointed because I've worked hard all my life to get where I am today. I don't know, Mayor, if you're on social security or not, I don't care. And I do not know if you're on social security, I do not know if you have a living other than that. There's only like three or four of us in this room that may be on social security. Every one of you has probably got a job. Do you think that's fair to people like us? Just, you know, I'm, I'm said all I'm going to say because I dare not say anything. Thank you very much.
Any other public participation?
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your input this evening. Oh.
I'd like to say something. So I've been following along, and it really disappoints me that there are people who think that the administration spent too long explaining all of the things that you have been asking. I mean, everyone likes to laugh when these meetings go four hours for over stupid stuff that doesn't matter. This is important, and we had two candidates for council up and walk out. It's pathetic.
All done?
All done.
All right, we will adjourn at 9:28. Thank you, everybody, for your time and input.